What's up, what's up, good people, what's up, what's up, what's up, what's up? You know who we are, man, we the dream team, me and my lovely, beautiful wife Andrea Jordan. We are here today, you know, trying to do our thing. We just trying to make sure everything is popping and copasthetic. We love everybody that's tuned in, we give you a little chance to tune in, but the day, today is a special day. We have some very special people here and who's here is meant to be here. Some of us couldn't, but that's another story, in another time, in another date, in another four years. But, the people that we have today is, they're exquisite. They're at the top of the level of the game of the best. And we gonna get it popping real good, we gonna give y'all time to, you know, add it to your profile, so, so everybody get tuned in. All y'all, people that, that, that love y'all so much, that's gonna vote for y'all and, and be on your side, we gonna give y'all time to go ahead and add it to your profile page, but man, look, check this out, if you looking at us, huh?
I don't have that.
If you looking at us, man.
Did you tag her?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just trying to make sure everybody get tagged up, everybody's tagged up, you should be in there.
She don't have a notification.
Did y'all see y'allself?
No.
She don't have a notification?
Which page you tag?
She does. I mean, La- why Laquita?
You did, why Laquita?
Yeah, but today, man, we got, like I said, we got special, but what I was saying was, if you watching, if you tuned in right now, or if you catch this later, you gonna get this message, you gonna know that I'm gonna have to say this, if you watching us, you are blessed. You know why you blessed? Because God is upon your soul.
Okay.
And if you don't believe in God, I don't know what to tell you, if you don't believe in that man above, hey, you know, you all out there, the wolves are very thirsty and hungry, so be careful. But today, man, we have one, two, three, four, supposed to be five, six, but we got four candidates that's running for city council. And I'm gonna give these young men and young ladies a chance to introduce themselves, I'm gonna start with, who I'm gonna start with? Boom, it's on Mrs. Dawn. Tell me your story, tell them yourself, you know, give them a little bit of background or whatever you wanna give.
Okay, um, so what's up everybody, uh, my name is Dawn Johnson, um, I'm born and raised in Cincinnati. Born and raised in Cincinnati, A1 since day one, um, I went to Purcell Marion.
What's up, bro, what's going on?
UC, Whittenburg, all those, uh, grade schools, but, um, you know, for, I, I, I'm a community activist. Um, you know, I get it honest, my, my dad, uh, worked at Withrow, my mom was a principal for 15 years. So, you know, I get it honest, I love the people, I love my people. Um, and, you know, I've been inspired to run because of some tragedy that happened in my life. And at this point, I'm putting my passion into purpose, my pain into purpose. And I'm here to, uh, work for the, the people of Cincinnati and to change these systems that no longer work. So, I'm here, I'm passionate, I'm ready to get to work, thank you.
Yes, 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 I love it, I love it, I love it, I love it, and to your left, facing my front, we have who?
It's the Donald Washington, I'm glad to be back, thank you for having me again, yes, yes, yes.
Give him a little background himself, man.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, I'm Donald, uh, I'm from OTR, born and raised, grew up, uh, over the Rhine, yeah. Um, and, uh, just like Dawn, graduated from Purcell Marion, uh, yeah, we alumni Cavaliers, Cavaliers. Um, and, um, I, um, 17, I went to the Air Force, uh, went to Iraq, uh, one tour in Iraq, came back, I'm an entrepreneur. Um, now, uh, for fighting for my country, I wanna fight for my city, and specifically my community. Um, I am deeply affected by the kids that have to go through so much trauma. And I know all about that trauma because I'm from one of those neighborhoods that's been marginalized, so that's why I'm running for council. I want to help those kids in those situations, uh, to give them opportunity, just like I was given, um, so that's why I'm running.
Yes, 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 we love it, we love it, we love it, and I gotta say, to your left is Mrs. Yes, yes, yes.
Laquita Cole.
What do you say, what do you say?
Laquita Cole, when you go to the poll, vote for Cole. How you all doing, thank you for having me back, it is great, um, so just a little bit about myself, uh, born and raised in the city of Cincinnati. Um, actually originally from Zone 15, but then, um, found my way to the city, graduated from Aiken High School, swoop, to all my fellow swoop, cuz I know they listening. And, um, served on city council, I was the first African-American woman and youngest woman to be appointed to Cincinnati City Council. Um, I served on council all four terms, from, from there, um, I was term limited, and then I went up to Columbus and I worked for the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio for a short term, came back, I worked in the administration. I do have a master's degree in public administration, and Dawn, I didn't know you went to Whittenburg. You went to Whittenburg? I graduated from Whittenburg, yes, that's, that's my undergraduate, um, I have undergraduate degree in political science from Whittenburg University. And then, um, my master's degree in public administration with a concentration in HR. So I went on to, um, run the HR department for the Parks Department. I currently have an eight-year-old and I have my own business, um, and so, um, I'm also the vice president of the Bon Hill Community Council. And what I, I learned, um, I used to be the president of the community council and then I left sometime, I'm a lifelong member of the community council, but now I'm back on the board as the vice president. And what made me run again is the fact that I felt that this council, some members of council was missing the piece of actually connecting to our community and actually listening to what was going on. I felt that, um, our citizens were, um, being left out of the process. Um, they're, they continue to talk about crime and however, all they wanna do is throw money at the police and that's not the answer. We have to, actually have to look at the root causes of that, and the root causes is that the racial disparities. There are two cities in the city of Cincinnati and anyone tell you is not, they're not telling you the truth. Um, and, um, that's because we continue to be left behind and unheard and underserved. And when you talk about police, uh, policing, um, we've, we are the ones that gonna call, but yes, it is still, at the same time, we are being overpoliced and that's a problem for us, and so I decided to run again because of those certain issues, um, few of those issues, and put my hat back in the ring. So, thank you so much.
Right, 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 now, as you can see, my man straightened up his cards, and you wanna flip that one?
Oh.
Right side up, yes.
My fault.
I got you, Stefan, go ahead, Stefan, I got you.
I appreciate that, I appreciate.
See how, see how they work together?
Yes.
Yeah, she worked, worked together and she put a little bug on your thing, but don't worry about it. It's all good, man.
There you go to the poll, both of that booger. I'm playing with you, I'm playing with you, I'm playing with you.
Yeah, so we're gonna, imagine it'll ever hurt a chance to speak and, and, um, um, address and, um, I can't think of the word I'm looking for. Um, tell us about yourself.
I'm glad you said that, my name is Stefan Pryor, son of a legend, Mr. Aaron the Hawk Pryor, the champion of the world, uh, two-time champ, Hall of Famer, uh, I'm born and raised in, uh, Ohio, I mean, Ohio, born and raised over the Rhine, downtown also, yeah, uh-huh, yes, sir. Okay, alright, okay, and, uh, what made me get into the, to this race, I ran for state rep first, ran for state rep last year, 2024. And, uh, it was a, a great feeling, it was a great run too, that I was happy that I ran, you know what I mean, my numbers did great. And, uh, and I said, why not continue this journey, you know, I've been around a lot of council members back in the day. Uh, Laquita Cole to my right, been knowing her some years, you know, been knowing her so long, I might get a motorcycle. But, uh, been knowing her so long, and, uh, I said, why not run this race and fight these battles in our communities? You know, the community that we live in, not just over the Rhine, all communities, uh, like Western Hill Vadox, that's my baby, the Western Hill Vadox Bridge. I advocated for that bridge, uh, because it's crumbling, it's rusted, corroded, uh, concrete is falling. Uh, not just that, you cross the bridge, you gotta go see the seniors, so that bridge got something to do with our seniors, our seniors not getting treated right. So, uh, them, them actually, how can I say, my platforms, uh, Western Hill Vadox Bridge, our seniors. Seniors getting, you know, mistreated, uh, in these facilities, you got mold in them, and, uh, they, they shouldn't be living in mold. You know, all this money going out in, in these communities and they renovating everything, why not renovate some of these nursing homes? So, fighting for that, job creation equal less crime, it's a lot of, uh, people in the streets still on the corner selling their little reefer, their weed, and they need jobs, you know, and they're not making enough money, they need jobs, so these developers just come in the neighborhood and build, they should be actually giving these youth jobs, employment, and not just that, uh, I stand for fair housing and justice, uh, receivership. Uh, receivership is basically when they, you know, you got citations on your property, your taxes, blah, 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 next thing you know, you can't pay it, uh, next thing you know, you go to court, once you go to court, the judge give it to a receiver. And the receiver, what he do sits on your property, he supposed to hold the property, but all of a sudden, he, he runs on the property and start working on your property, wise in receivership, now you pay these citations and, and fines, so you get appliance, get you up the plants at the park, of paying these, uh, 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 I about say utility bills, but no, up to paying your bills, your, your, your taxes, right? All of a sudden, the receiver give you a bill, once they give you a bill, like 60,000, all of a sudden, I don't got 60,000, well, we gonna put a lien on your property and take it. So, receivership is, is a, it should be a crime, you know, they need to go to jail, I mean ASAP, because you taking people's property that they work hard for, and I've been seeing this over many years, and I said, why not get involved with this race? Tax abatements, I always talk about tax abatements, come on, y'all, it's pushing people out of the neighborhoods. Let's give these developers at least five years of tax abatement, not no 15 to 20 years, five years, you know what I mean, it's hurting schools, it's, it's doing a lot. We just don't see it, we, we just don't see what's going on, you know, they're smiling in your face, I always call them suits and liars, you know, suits?
Liars.
Liars and suits.
Yeah.
You know, so, and it's sad what's going on in our community, so why not fight this battle or fight this fight? You know, I used to be a fighter too, a professional, I was, uh, 13 and two, seven knockouts.
Yeah.
And, uh, I like to fight for the people, what's right, you know what I mean, and, uh, that's why I'm running this race, 2025, and I'm going hard. And, uh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can keep going, but thank you.
We love it, we love it, we want you to keep going, and we want the, the people out there.
Uh-huh.
If you tuned in, I know you are friends with Stefan, you friends with Laquita, or Kita, you friends with, um, Donald, you friends with Dawn. Okay, yeah, you friends with all of them, so if you see them, get on here, ask your questions, this is your chance to ask all the questions that you want to ask. And we asking that you, anything you wanna ask, man, I know y'all kinda concerned about what's going on with the public, with, with your communities. And, um, I think, you know, it's time for some new answers, because like y'all said, the suits and liars, y'all used to them all the time. They want you vote, they gonna tell you, they gonna feed you all the goodness and greatness, but when it comes down, when you, when they get in that seat, it's gonna be a big change. Am I right, Donald?
You're right, you're right, and that's what you should expect from me, I never give a political answer, I give you straightforward what I think, and I don't dance around.
Yes, yes, I love it, man, I love it, so, so, so Donald, you know, um, you know, we had you on the show last time, and I'm gonna jump right into something, man, because, uh, when you said it, and I think Kita kinda advocates for this too, but when y'all said it, it's about the, um, CCY program. And that is something that I miss, that's something that I see, like, when I look at these, uh, teens on the street and, and, and the trouble that they get into, and it's like, they can't do nothing, I mean, it's, it's nothing to do, so they might as well do something. So, why do you advocate so hard, and you're, from your perspective on, um, CCY?
Okay, that's a good question, I'm glad you asked me, um, I might sound a little stuffy cuz I'm getting over a coat, uh, so bear with me. But, um, so CCY is very important to me, the Citizens Committee on Youth, um, because it was actually my first job, and I, I think I worked there twice. Um, but, give you a little backstory on myself, uh, I became an entrepreneur, but I always had this entrepreneurial spirit, right? Like, I, I used to go and buy, like, uh, jerseys from, from, uh, uh, I don't wanna say where, I used to go buy some jerseys from a certain place, and then I'll go back to the hood and I'll sell those jerseys and make two, three times, and I was only like 12 years old, um, 12 years old doing this. And I used to go to the store for, uh, the corner boys, like, I used to go to the store and go to the, and they'll pay me to go to the store for them to go get their food or something like that, so I just always had this hustle, and I think that's very important. Like, I be seeing those little boys on the corner selling waters and things like that, I think that is so important, but that's why I'm fighting for CCY. To give those kids that energy, that energy, that same energy that they have, and put it in a professional setting and show them that they can be more, and they can do more, and they can learn some actual skills, and I know how important that is, so that's why I'm fighting for that.
This was up, this was up, so, um, I see, I see, I see Kita over there itching and, and everything to say something about CCY. Why you, why is it so important for CCY? Because when I was coming up, I, I promise you, it seemed like every neighborhood, the children, we was all out there working. We probably didn't wanna be, but our, our parents was like, thank God, it's a program for these chi- these children, so why do you think it's so important to you?
So let me, um, go back to the backstory, cuz a lot of people wanna know why, what happened with CCY from the beginning, and don't understand why it's not there. And, um, some people think it's the city's fault, but that's not the case, um, CCY wasn't armed of the city, but was actually its own separate organization. And so, back, um, when I was on council, what happened was CCY applied for federal government for $5 million, and, um, they did not, did not fulfill that, that, um, that contract, and so the federal government wanted their money back. And so every time our young people were working, the, and they put money into the, and we, the city put money into the coffers that the federal government was coming and taking the money back because, and they didn't know it was the city's money, it was just the money that was in there, they was in receivership, and this, using the word receivership, they were in receivership, so the federal government were coming in and taking the money before the kids were even able to get their money. And so the kids were not getting paid, and so of course, me being on council, I'm like, you still have to, we have to pay the city, which is unfortunate because basically we were paying twice, we paid CCY, and then we had to pay the kids, to make sure that the kids get the money. And so, um, eventually CCY closed down, however, the program, I want the program to continue to go forward. And so what I, um, did was had an RFP that went out, um, and with that RFP, what I wanted to do is making sure that, um, it had a different arm to it as well, a little twist to it, so we had our young kids had a life skills portion of it, so they were still getting paid in sense to get, um, some financial literacy, banking, uh, letter, uh, writing, resume writing, interviewing skills, um, and, um, budgeting. And so also helping them to get a bank account, because a lot of these kids were under the age, and so they couldn't get it. So we only had like one bank that was willing to help these kids get a bank account, cuz what was happening also, what we found is, as soon as these kids were getting money, their parents were taking their money, and so, uh, which was a little unfair, so we wanted to make sure that these kids, um, had an opportunity to actually hold on to their money, so we had it, oh, we put an RFP out, and I'm gonna be honest with you, who I thought was going to be able to win the RFP would have been the Urban League, but that didn't happen. It was the Community Action Agency who had a better plan for them, because they also have Blueprint for Success, which is another program we had. And Blueprint for Success was for young people to learn the trades, the building trades, and getting into learn, um, electrician, plumbing, and all those things. And so that program was still going on, which was supposed to go on, because our young people, you know, when we did CCY, we was only about picking up litter on the side of the road and things like that, where, um, we took it a step further, I wanted to go a step further, where we actually connected our young kids with career paths. And so they were working in jobs that can lead them to a career, for example, putting them, connecting them with organizations, um, for example, like Kroger's. And so, who didn't want employee, and kids that were working and they didn't have to pay for, so they were getting free labor. So we had them connected with these different organizations, um, and they were working there, they, we even had some in our Parks Department, we had them with the various departments working in there, I had them in my office working, so they can see the different side of things. So when I went away, what happened, when I left, what happened is they passed the buck along to Community Action, I mean, not Community Action too, United Way to start looking at programs, which is a problem, which is why the city of Cincinnati in itself had a healthy human services budget. Because what was going on is many of our people were not being able to apply, they were hard to serve and they were not, um, United Way was not giving them those contracts. And so we had it underneath our own umbrella, now it was a little political, but it was fine, because we were able to check the milestones and making sure these programs were doing exactly what they were intended to do, um, and making sure that our people who are hard to serve were getting those contracts. For example, we were making sure, um, what is the, the, uh, I can't think of the organization right now, that does the, like, the black, um, theater, Cincinnati Black Theater. They were never able to get any of the money from United Way, where they were able to finally get funding with the city holding the contract. And so what happened was, this council or the council beforehand, I'm not sure which council it is, passed the buck to United Way. So many of those programs, we don't even know what's going on with them, they can't even tell you what's going on with them. What, you know, I propose is that they come back into house, and yes, there is going to be some fights and it's gonna be difficult, but that's what elected officials are there for, not to pass the buck to the administration or into another organization to manage it. And now you paying them to manage an organization, and that's money that's going out, I don't know how much that contract is, but I can tell you it's not a cheap contract. And so why would we wanna send that money back to United Way, that was not even giving us an opportunity at the table in the first place? They had, they should be managing their own money, so we need to bring it back in house and making sure that the people who, the, the hard to serve people are getting an opportunity to have a piece of that pie, and that way we can find out what's actually going on with our young, with our youth program. And for me, it should not just be a summer youth program, it should be all year round program. So I wanna take it a step further, right, not just a summer.
Okay, we have some questions, but I'm gonna wait to get back to it, cuz we gonna give Stefan a chance to go ahead and explain. One thing, I wanna know that you talk about a lot, that I seen you, you go into these nursing home, just to let you know, I've been working in nursing home for over 30 years. So I like that, that, you know, you advocating for that, you know, and what you can do to help better is for these nursing homes, because I'm a nurse at a nursing home right now, and that's my job, I've been working, that's, that's the only job I know, over 30 years, I've been in nursing homes.
Uh-huh.
In geriatric for these, you know, and what can, what, what you're gonna do that can help us to make it better for these, these people loved ones in the nursing home?
Well, uh, they always say that's a, a state issue, you know, if I'm wrong, you correct me, cuz she's a professional, I'm a right. She's been in the game for a long time, about the city council seats, but, uh, they say it's a state issue. And, uh, but if it's, if it's in the city, it's a Cincinnati issue.
Okay.
And what made me start going to nursing home first was a young lady called me and she said, Stefan, you need to come to the nursing home. She worked there, I'm not gonna tell you which one, she worked there or her name, but she said, she said, I like, I work here, Stefan, I want you, I was like, nah, I ain't coming up there. I don't wanna come up there, all of a sudden, I get a picture, I'm just telling you how it all started. I got a picture of her with a hamburger bun and french fries, no meat, was on the bread, so I'm thinking it was her meal, her meal, like.
This was one of the residents?
This was one of the workers first, and I didn't get what was going on, I was dealing with the Western Hill Vadox Bridge, I was advocating for that. But I get a picture, uh, of a hamburger bun and french fries, I was like, well, you on a well-good diet, you trying to lose some weight. She was like, nah, this is a singer's eating this, I say, huh? So she got on the phone with, uh, one of the singers and she, she was like, baby, you need to come up here, baby, and I was like, who is this? You know what, nevermind, don't come up, that's what the singer lady told me, right? So all of a sudden, I wind up going up there. Before I went up there, I went to the restaurant, brought some food and took it up there to her, her name was Miss Gloria Mals. And, uh, went up there, sat with her, and, uh, she told me they mistreating her up there, the, the, the food, the food we're not eating right. And they're not feeding us right, the right nutrition that we need to have, you got all starch on the plate, that's equal sugar. And, uh, she was basically upset about it, so what I did was up there catering to her, bringing her food. And, uh, when I was doing that, I seen the other residents in there, like, why you bringing food to her, you got a whole lot of people in here. You being selfish, I like, I don't know y'all, you know, they trying to be funny, that I, I don't know y'all, let me get to know y'all first, you know? But, uh, wound up bringing food to the people up there, and, uh, what I would do was actually resource, more resource, resource to the seniors, because you, you think about it, they trying to erase the footprints of our, of our seniors. Mistreating them wrong, and they not getting fed their medication, uh, their money getting stolen, they, some of the, yeah, they, she told me all that, the money getting stolen, they, their clothes getting missing, uh, missing, and you got, you got, uh, mold inside these facilities, you know, it, it's just sad. So what I would do is, uh, have an inspector go in there.
Right, right.
And, uh, go in there and, uh, actually, you know, not shut it down, at least give them some, some, some violations and, uh, go resource for some money, you know, to fix it up, you know what I mean, get rid of that mold, you know? And speaking of that, I run my own germicide treatment service too.
Right, right.
I got machines that kill mold, and I, I realize I had them, I forgot, oh, I need to come in here and volunteer my time with my.
Did you actually do that?
I did not do it yet, not at all, cuz I've been busy doing a lot of other stuff, and I got machines that really kill mold and, uh, really kills it. UVC lights, yeah, germicide of treatment service, it would kill mold, black mold, mildew, any smell, any DNA that's been, it's forming to a molecule of any germ and bacteria, kills it, and I learned from that from the hospital, and I wound up buying a machine, cost me 1,800 for it, and I got tabletop lamp. So, I'mma, I'mma reach out to the ones that I've been going in, cuz some of them got a picture of me, you see this guy, don't let him inside here. They don't know it's a picture out like that.
It's real.
Yeah, so it's a picture out there for me saying, yeah, so you see this guy, call the police, we don't want him in here. Yeah, yeah, because I'm coming here to actually, not just expose them, just, just to tell the truth what's going on in the nursing home. And then we keep doing it, advocating for something, something to happen, so more resource, resources for our seniors, better care for our seniors. But don't get me wrong, you got some nursing homes look like this, look like this, real nice, it's on my page. I filmed a hallway and got over 100,000 views off a hallway, we didn't go inside the facility home where they living quarters is, but.
This is a, this is a good-looking hallway or bad?
A hallway looked good, we talking about it's beautiful, you can sleep in the hallway, you can eat in the hallway, that's how good it look. So, it's not just saying shut them down, no, renovate them, you know what I mean? It, it, it's sad that our seniors getting treated like that, and they getting fund, funds from our seniors, monthly, some of them get social security. They get the half of their check took, you know, give them $40, like that's enough money, you know, to live on.
Right.
But, uh, that, that's my, my goal is to fight for our seniors, I'm gonna keep doing it till the day I die.
To fight, to be more of an advocate, but like I said, I've been, like me, I work for an agency company, where I go through all over the greater Cincinnati, so, and not even just Cincinnati, I be in Mason, I be everywhere, you know, and I work, and like you said, it's certain, nursing homes is just nice, like you can eat off their floors. They feeding them luxury meals, some of these facilities have like bars for their residents, they have ice cream socia, they have all this, but in the city, when I go to the city, like, I, I don't discriminate where I go, I go, I'm a nurse and I go help everybody. So, I don't just be like, oh, I'm not gonna pick this assignment, like, you know, in Avondale, you know, I'm not gonna just not go there because these people need to be taken care, so I see what you're saying, that you wanna be the advocate for the city, the people down in the city in those nursing home, they do need more people to be more of an advocate for them, because it is a big difference from all over. I go to so many nursing homes throughout the greater Cincinnati and other, you know, counties, and I be, Batavia, I be everywhere, you know? So, but down in the city, a lot of them, you know, I'd have been to, not, so, one that you showed, be, I, I seen you, one that you showed, and at first, when I walked through there, I'm like, do I wanna take this down, it's happening today, but I'm there, so I gotta fight it out, because I agree with my company, I would go to work for these people, you know, to work there. So, they do need somebody to be a advocate for them, and it, and it, I mean, it, it is a lot that's going on, it's down in the city, so I think they do really need that.
I think once you say some light on it, it, it starts something, so you doing that, it started something.
Let me just say something, cuz you said it's a state issue, it is, but it can be a city issue, just to give you.
Yes.
So once, um, you get elected, what you can do is ask the city administration on how to make it a licensing issue. And once it becomes a licensing issue, then you can go in and do some, um, some inspections and making sure that those are up there, up to par and on, and doing the right thing, making sure, for example, the health department regardless, that's not a state issue, that's a city issue. So that can be there, it's just things you can do and ask the administration how we can make sure that we have some control, because when I've gone into them, um, just to make sure that those, that our seniors are being educated about the election process and what's going on, um, I've seen these conditions and, and, and I wanna applaud you, um, for doing so, and it is true, people do. I was in the grocery store and somebody asked me to contact Stefan, hey, can you get in contact with Stefan, because what they doing, and tell him to come back, because what they doing is not right, they're taking, uh, what, what she say, $50, or only giving us, giving us $50. I'm like, okay, let me call him right down, I call Stefan, I'm like, hey, so-and-so said you need to come back up there, because they're only giving them $50.
True story.
Um, they're taking money, so anytime, so like, for me, when they call, I'm gonna say, I'mma call, cuz this is the person, this is, that's his issue. And so he, I, I applaud you for doing that, because I do think that they are the forgotten community sometimes, and people don't know how to advocate for them. And so while they're saying it's a state issue, once you get there, we can make it a city issue.
Okay, and, uh, not just our seniors, our workers too, the workers that's working inside these facilities, they need to actually, how can I say, some training how to talk to these seniors, they, they talk to them so, so, so rudely and, and disturbing the stuff they be saying to them, and that's not, you know, polite how they talk to them, you know what I mean, if you been, I've been raised about my grandma or my mama, you know, father came along, you know, down the line years later, but your parents and my, my mom and my grandma, they didn't play these games, you know, you gonna respect them regardless, especially the woman. And nobody's not respecting the woman nowadays, you know what I mean, disrespecting the woman for no reason, talking to any type of way, and you came from a woman. How can you disrespect that woman, period, if one for the, for the woman, we wouldn't be here, no man, no woman, no politician, we wouldn't be here. But people disrespect the woman all the time, and it's real sad that they do that, and the seniors, and that's our seniors, like I say, they trying to erase the footprints of our seniors, so you won't know nothing.
Yes.
So that's why I was. So that's why it was very important to me to make that trip up to that nursing home. Not just one. I went to like seven of them. Seven nursing homes. I went to uh, LaFue and Queen City up there, Mountain Crest. Went to uh, Lincoln Crawford. Oh man, it's bad up there, Lincoln Crawford. Man, we, we got, we got bare from look like, they had urine all on the wall, like rusting the, rusting the uh, the metal. Like, yeah, bad. Uh, then you had, uh, I'mma go in with them now. Uh, you had a story. I mean, you go, oh man, you go inside of that place, man, it, it smells. It smells so bad, like you get sick. Uh, one lady told me, open the door, opened the door, mold just hit my face. I mean, it's that bad. Uh, when you go inside, like an eating area like this, it was so small. It was real small, like a closet where there's eating at. It, it's that sad in these nursing homes, Lincoln Crawford and uh, Basically.
Out, I'd have been to some, you like, wow, they, they, they had it made, that luxury. But then the ones in the city is like that and it's not there. So please stay on it. And like you said, it's a state thing. In a nursing home, you have a state coming. They do a yearly state um, survey. That the state comes and they survey.
You, you got a good point.
Yeah, they say, they, they, they come out every year to all these nursing homes. They have to have, every year, they come out and do a state survey. They come out, even if it's a complaint, they will come out. So if people complain or whatever, the state comes out and survey these facilities.
I got a, a, a database in my phone that I can click up any nursing home and then they give me the grade of the nursing home. This young lady, she's a researcher and she sent it to me. And I typed up different nursing homes I went to. They give them grades and they give them poor or give it as a grade. They get, they actually score them of, of their facilities. And uh, I mean, if some of them inspectors come through and leave right out. They leave right out. They go in, come out, like, whoa, you ain't do nothing about it? Nope. So.
Do they know that the people are coming? Like, do they schedule like?
No, sometimes they, you would just, you could be at work and then all of a sudden you, 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 everybody come around, stayed in the building today. You never know. They don't say on this date they're coming. They never tell you when they coming. They just comes. Like if you, sometimes like, let's say if they came this month. For the yearly, October. So sometime around next October, you expecting them. And it don't have to be in October. They can come in January. You just up for your yearly expiration. So they do do that. They do, do that.
So how is it that they have the nerve to um, keep it, the facilities really gross and unkept?
Because you gotta do your um, plan of correction. So just say you go in there and like you said, that these facilities have mold or whatever. They have to do a plan of correction. So when they come back, you have to have a plan of correction. So what they probably did was got the mold going. Cause they gotta do a plan of correction. Whatever they get cited for, they have, the facility have to turn in a plan of correction. And the plan of correction is, okay, he said they have mold in this room and these moves or whatever. They're gonna go in there and get that mold, even though that mold is gonna grow back. You see what I'm saying? So the next year if the survey come, they probably ain't even looking for the mold this time. But it's back and so it's still there. You see what I'm saying?
What happens if they're violated?
They, they get cited and they have to pay. So if they get a J, uh, a J tag or whatever, that's a jeopardy tag. That facility have to pay so many thousands a day until it's corrected.
Can I speak to something real quick that Stefan said? Uh, I don't want to hijack y'all, y'all platform. I know y'all got questions, but Stefan said something that um, um, I wanted to speak to. He said about uh, respecting black women. And I um, I posted a book on my uh, social media page. It was uh, by Shiraz Ali uh, titled um, The Black Man's Guide of Understanding the Black Woman. And um, such an important book. Um, and like I said, I wanted to address him saying supporting, uh, supporting black women. Look, um, hear me out. I want y'all to hear me out, hear, hear everything I say. Do not react to, I'm done. So listen. Angry black woman, because I kept hearing my opponent talk about this angry black woman. And with that being said, black women have every right to be angry. This is my camera right here. Black women have every right to be angry. And let me fully explain. There is a problem within black men. We do not, we, we, we aren't fighting to protect our community. So you um, not protecting her kid, you not protecting her. And you got the nerve to badmouth her in public. This is insane. Because the man's supposed to lead. At least that's, that's how socially we are set up. So with that being said, if the black woman is angry, it's because the black man isn't on his job, which he's not. He's not protecting the community. He's not providing those opportunities for his kids. And he has the problem. So when the black man get his mind right, then the, the, the black woman will no longer have to be angry.
You know, we said, we know what, what you saying that? It's kinda off the subject, but still in the same category. But we was talking about, um, you know, this, this, the, the soft arrogant, the soft girl era thing. And he was like, you know, once you get there and the man, you know, um, helps you get there, then you both could be at peace and you could both elevate from that. But when you, it's too much turmoil, it's too much this and that, it's like, it's never gonna happen. So um, I want to ask Don, now Don, uh, we heard Stefan say, um,
Don or Dawn? Which one?
I mean, yeah, no, Don. We heard Stefan say that, you know, um, something along the lines where, you know, they don't know what's going on with the money. But with these nursing homes, I, I believe that they do have money to fix all the problems. Need, I think some people just kinda slide into their, to their bank account. Or something like that. I don't know what's going on. But it's, it's, it's room for improvement. And there's plenty of opportunity. What do you think something that can be done to help improvise and, and help de-escalate all the craziness within the nursing home system?
Um, so I, first off, I agree with uh, Lakita. I think that um, you know, I think there definitely uh, needs to be people checking on them. Um, I think that we do need to make it a city issue. Um, you know, and most importantly, you know, right now, there's no oversight. There's no oversight. Uh, and that's happening with a lot of the uh, nonprofits and a lot of the organizations in our city. They're getting this money and nobody is checking for it. Nobody, there is no oversight committee. Making sure that these people are doing what they're supposed to do. So when I get elected, that's the, that's one of the first things I'm gonna do is create oversight committees. To make sure that people and organizations are doing what they say they're gonna do. I wanna, I wanna understand the impact. I wanna know the impact report. Um, I wanna know, like, are you doing what you're saying, saying that you're doing? And if not, then we, we need to sit down and have a conversation. Because all too often, the city is just continuously funding all of these organizations without checking. You know, of course, they're supposed to be doing these certain things like with grant money and, and the funding, but are they really doing it? Um, and who's really checking? Like, and that's, that's the problem is when you have a lack of oversight, then people are gonna do what they want to do. They're gonna pocket the money. Um, and they're not going to actually help the people that actually need it. So that, that, that is exactly what I would do. That's, that's how you bring in, that's, you hold people accountable. You hold organizations accountable. If they're using uh, city funding, they, they, you need to hold them accountable. So, same thing with the nursing homes. I mean, clearly there needs to be um, a committee that is specifically formed to check on these um, nursing homes and these people. And they need to go and meet these people where they are and ask them. Like the Council on Aging, what's wrong? Why aren't they, you know, they're, they're an organization. Why aren't they checking on these people and making sure that these living conditions are sanitary? And, you know, and acceptable for our elders to live in. So that's exactly what needs to happen. You know, we need to understand, you know, we need to make sure that there's oversight and that these people are uh, being held accountable.
Yes, so that is good. So I want to answer some questions for, because we did ask people to tune in and ask questions. Um, I'm just gonna read off some stuff. Aretha first says, CCY, the best work experience ever, which was my first job experience for three straight summers. So she loving that. Dimitris Hill said, this is a question for you, Ms. Cole. She said, as Ms. Cole. Dimitris Hill. I don't, okay, Dimitris Hill. Said, as Ms. Cole about the city trying to uh, privatize our water, how she feels about that?
Sure. Um, so, you know, I, I go back to like Monopoly. You know, when you play Monopoly, the first thing you learn is what? You hold on to your utilities and you hold on to the railroads, right? You don't sell those off. You're supposed to keep hold on to those. So that's my answer. You don't, we shouldn't have sold the railroad for a one-time windfall. Because right now we got what, one point, we got, I think one point eight billion dollars, something like that. Guess what they sold it for? Eighty-five, eighty-five billion. Yes, eighty-five billion. Um, and so what, for real? It's on my, it's on my, uh, I made a post on my, um, on my Facebook.
They sold it for eighty-five million, but now it's one billion.
No, no, no. Billion, billion. Eighty billion. Look on my page. I wrote, I, 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 I posted the page of what, when we sold it, what we, what we got for it. And now what it's worth, eighty-five billion. Cause remember they said that when they sold the railroad, this is the most we gonna get, so we need to do it right now. So then I found out they have now, it's worth eighty-five billion. But they said that one point eight billion dollars is the most we gonna get. Well, now it's worth eighty-five. Look on my story. Look on my, look on my Facebook page. It's, it's, it's a story you gotta, I'll, I'll repost it so it can come back up to the top. So no, I don't agree with it. Uh, uh, water, why would we, why would we sell our water? It's the best thing. You know, you go anywhere else, where can you go and you can actually feel, I can feel, I don't have to buy water. I can fill my water right here. With, it puts some ice with a good old Cincinnati water and drink it. Good old Cincinnati water and drink it. You know, you can't do that anywhere. So why? Of anything, we need to be bottling it and selling the water in the bottles. But we don't sell off our, sell off our, the waterworks. Not on that, what are you going to do with the employees? Our retirement, our pension system is already messed up. You do that, we really gonna be, the city gonna bankrupt. I'm telling you that now. The city gonna bankrupt because we, because we already are in a deficit with our pension fund. That's what, we're the only city that still has our own separate pension fund. We need to merge with, with um, Opers, but they, they won't take it. You know why they won't take it? Because we are such uh, financial deficit. They won't take it until you eighty-five, eighty-five percent solvent. So, um, great question, Dimitris, but um, so my answer is no, you don't sell it. Play like Monopoly. That's why, that's why we learned how to play when we was young. You don't sell your, you don't sell your utilities and you don't sell your railroad. I know the railroad's out there, I know we can do about it, it's already gone. However, I want to know what that money is, because they said it's gonna be infrastructure and our, our streets still look a mess. Um, I want to know what's going on with that. Um, and so that's a problem for me. And then um, the other thing is, no, we don't sell it. They've been trying to sell the waterworks for, I don't know, and try to have a merge. Trying to merge with MSD, sell this. No, we don't sell it. You don't.
So, so how did you find out about that? That, that, you said it's on your page. You said?
I came across a news story on it.
Eighty-five, they sold for one point five billion and they, and they sold it for eighty-five.
Now it's worth eighty. And I want to go out and look, but I'm scared if I go out and look, I can't get back to the live. Cause I just was fighting to get back to it. But it's on my, it's on my page. Um, and I, I'mma put it to the top. When I put it, when I get it, I'mma put it to the top and I'm, I'mma um, tag every last one of y'all.
And then on the, and then on the water, you said they uh, trying to sell our water or did they sell our water?
No, they want to sell. There's a plan to, a proposal that they want to sell waterworks. Privatize it. And that would be privatizing. I'm against privatization. Let me be clear with you, with our city employees. I've always been a bit against privatization. You so silly. Right. So, so, and I, and, and let me say this. When I was on council, I, I'mma be honest with you. I did support, it's on there, you found it? Okay, thank you. Thank you. This is what she, so right here, it says, Union Specific in Northern Southern reaches eighty-five billion dollar merger deal. Eighty-five billion. Yes, yes, there is, it, I'm, there it is. So, yes, so my thing is, you, you don't sell those things. But there, you know, there's a lot um, that continue to go on with this administration um, that lacks vision, in my opinion. It lacks um, goals. That's why we don't know where we're going. Um, it's, it's been going around in the circles. Um, that's why things are going like it is. And um, we need to make sure that if, if, if the mayor doesn't have a vision or goals, the council need to have a vision or goals. Um, about where we want to go, what we plan to accomplish. They can't accomplish anything because have no vision and goals. They want to tell all this thing, we done this, we done that. I mean, the other time, we were getting scolded. We were getting yelled at. And then, then they say, if you're not endorsed by the Democratic Party, you're a mega. I said to them, them little kids, and I'm gonna say little kids, because let me be clear with you. When I served on council the first term, y'all were ten and eleven years old. You didn't even know what a Democrat and a Republican was. So don't come with me with that. And not only that, I've always been a Democrat, but there's a different, I'm a different type of Democrat. You wanna call some Democrats, you wanna say vote for the different type of Democrats, because that's right, I'm different. Let me tell you what makes me different, because I don't vote for a party, I vote for the person. I vote for making sure that our community is not, our community is fed. Cause right now, our community is starving. That's why I keep talking about CCY, cause, and talking about the crime rate and our young people out there hanging around, because they're starving and they have nowhere to go. I took my time to go up to Woodward and I spoke to the four different classrooms. We had candidates there and I'mma be real clear what I told them. I told them, I don't want to hear from them. I'm tired of hearing, I hear y'all on the campaign trail. I'm here, yeah, same, and they, they would look on, they would look around like, what? I don't want to hear from y'all. I want to hear from the young people. This is, this is what I'm talking about. This table right here is not for y'all. The table's for these young people to come sit down and, and let's hear what they had to say. And what's going on with them and why they out there in the streets and what's, why, and what is, if they were in our seat, I asked them. If y'all were in our seat and you had, and you were a council member, what would you do to solve the issues that y'all are facing? You know what they say? Jobs. And we don't want to, they don't want a fast food job. He said, that's all that's out here, is fast food jobs. They don't want that. The second thing they say is they want a place for them to go and hang out, that feels safe. And we want to say we have recreation centers. And I have been a champion, a long-term champion of the recreation centers. When I was on council, instead of raising money for my campaign, I raised money for the recreation centers and the pool passes. To give our young people an opportunity to come into the pools, come into the recreation centers. And all they had to do was volunteer. I did that. But what I found is the reason why they don't come in, because they don't feel welcomed. They feel unwelcome. They don't feel um, comfortable about coming in. One of the things they said, that guess what? Um, when they want food after school, after school, you hungry? I know my, my child come home first thing. He do, he, he want a snack. He want something to eat. Can you, he don't say, then he'll say, I don't want a snack. Mommy, fix me a whole meal. I'm like, a whole meal? You're like, he want, he, I'm like, didn't you just eat at school? So that tells me, these kids, when they come up, they, they're hungry. They can't call Uber. They can't call them no food in. And if they leave the recreation center, they can't come back in. That's ridiculous. Yes, you feel, now we can like, that's what they said. So we can leave anytime we want to get food, come back. That makes no sense. And they closing, some of them closing at seven o'clock, eight o'clock. Why are you not having them open later on? When you talking about these kids are hanging out in the street on ten, eleven o'clock? Have the recreation centers open at ten, eleven o'clock and give them an opportunity to be at. And so right now, right. In the summertime, you know, the time our recreation centers open up, they open at seven thirty in the morning. Who is at the recreation, at recreation center at seven thirty in the morning? Our elderly is not even up at seven thirty in the morning at a recreation center. So why would you open it up that early and close early? Why would you not think about adjusting the hours, especially in the summertime? So it gives our young people somewhere to go and hang out and be amongst them, their peers. And then also provide them with opportunities.
I, I, I wanna, I don't want to jump the gun. And we on the same subject, cause if it wasn't for the water, them kids can't take a bath. I'm gonna go back to the water. Who got the organization to sell that? I'm asking you that. No, 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 you've been on council before. I'm just asking you because you, you know, you're a true uh, pioneer to the game.
Were the, were the water, well, I can tell you what happened with the railroads. It went to the, the citizens voted for that. The citizens voted to do the railroad. Um, in terms of the waterworks, I'd actually have to research, um, research that. Cause I'm gonna tell you, so many rules and regulations have changed since I've been gone. I've been gone since sixteen, for sixteen years. And so many, yeah, it's been sixteen years since the last time I was on. So many things have changed. So um, I don't know. I, I know it would have to, it would take a council vote. I don't know if it would take a referendum or not to make that happen. Which means by the citizens voting on that. But let's be clear. Sometimes when citizens vote, they are not actually told the entire story correctly either. And they're not necessarily informed. It's just like how we got the, the train that goes around the block. And I'mma say that. Um, so when I first was on council, yes, I supported this, the, the train, the, the trolley. Um, because at that point, it was supposed to, it was supposed to, I supported it because it was supposed to up, connect the uptown to the downtown. The two largest employment hubs. Um, they didn't lie, cause what happened was it changed. And once it changed, is when I changed my support for it. Because I, I was not going to support a system that went around the block. You said three miles. I'mma say one mile. It goes around the block. Um, and who's gonna ride it? The people who live downtown or people who come from out of town? But we're not gonna ride it because we don't get out of our cars enough to ride around the trolley. The, I rode on it once too. One time, just to see, cause my son wanted to see what it was like. The only time I rode, that's what I rode, when it was blink, during the blink, because there was so much going on, it was easier to get around on that. That's the only time I rode it. But other than that, that's, so that, the reason why I say that lie, because the citizens voted for that transportation. But remember, the transportation system was lumped into so much, it was supposed to be this uh, uh, train that connected Cincinnati to Columbus. All these transportation issues that they talked about was gonna happen. That was under the Obama administration, was gonna happen. But again, once Obama wasn't in office, everything changed. So when they voted, they didn't vote for the, for the, the trolley system. They voted for transportation as a whole pocket. And so that's how we got that. So my concern is, you put that on a referendum, making sure that the language is going to be correct. So that citizens can understand it and they don't do a, a bait and switch.
They seem pretty, um, they seem pretty um, used to doing that bait and switch thing. Like a lot of things, a lot of issues. Like a lot of people, and I want to like touch on this too, to see what, what, what can we do about this issue. But they say something about, you know, the guns, we need to stop the gun violence. They want to pray, you know, pray, have them march and this and that. And then once it kinda. They say something about you know the guns we need to stop the gun violence they want to pray you know pray have them march and this and that and then once it kind of smoothed out a little bit then they pull back. So Donald I hear you talking a lot about gun control I I I think I think some things that you said were were kind of um adequate in seeing that it could be done if they improvised and did what you said but. So what's your um stance on gun control?
Um I think that most importantly we have to start finding out where these guns are coming from. Uh when I was on a Zoom meeting and the chief was on that meeting someone specifically asked uh because she she was uh boasting that. They had a task force to get the guns off the streets but someone said well where's the task force to find out where the guns are coming from in the first place? And their answer was like um it was arbitrary arbitrary frivolous answer that oh well they're coming from all over. Well e- e- exactly like that's not an answer if they're coming from all over like these this is a real problem. That we need to address and we need to be preventive when the gun is on the street it's almost too late. Yes they they take about I think it was a hundred and twenty guns illegal guns off the street a month that's how uh the po how much the police fine or whatever. But I think at any given moment it was like six thousand illegal guns on the streets of Cincinnati. So a year they're only getting about twelve hundred thirteen hundred go ahead.
No I was gonna say they okay they saying let's get the guns out of the street and you know you know to have like gun drives and stuff like that. But didn't they also make it where you don't have to have your CC your license?
Yeah that's true that's true.
That's kind of like contradictory like okay like let's get them off the street but you don't have to have a license now so now they just make it it to me it just seem like it's making it more you know for guns to be so we're.
Well I will say this I will say this I I I am a believer in the Second Amendment I believe that you should be able to have your gun. Um so the people who can carry guns should be legal guns they the when I'm talking I'm talking about illegal guns. Uh the the ones who's out there committing crimes with these guns um so I I am an advocate like I said I am an advocate for the Second Amendment amendment but illegal guns need to be off the street. Um there's too many senseless killings too many senseless uh murders I mean shootings um so. I do have that gun buyback program and again people criticizing and said it doesn't work uh but my stance is less guns on the street is is safer by default.
So what 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 have what have they done in the past with the with the I I I guess they did a buyback program you said it doesn't work so what have they done? That will make yours different from theirs.
Um well first I will make sure that they are destroyed um I I I'm not sure about this so I really don't want to but I am gonna say it I'm not sure. But I I saw a article that was saying that some of those guns ended back on the street the so the guns the guns that were sold uh in the gun buyback program somehow they ended back on the street.
And and not to cut you off he's correct with that uh I ain't gonna say nobody names but I I was around. When they do the bad back gun program uh they give them a gift card and you know get the guns and they check for the guns to see if the guns have been you know.
Using in a in a in a crime.
In a crime correct and if they if they have it they restore them guns they fix them. And uh they can go back on the market and uh or you can sell them or they can keep them.
And that's ridiculous they should be destroyed.
So uh yeah I know about that then uh to piggyback off that of where the guns coming from when you're in the hood you see everything okay.
Right.
When I when I when I one day I was walking down the street and some young dudes was on the corner this is about like eight years ago and. There was a white transit van uh pulled up he pulled up I'm just watching observing young dude went to the to the truck see if he wanted some weed so you know and uh. And I'm paying attention deserving he like he got guns he got guns y'all and y'all he got guns he got guns. And then I came over with my camera hey man you can't be doing that and he drove off quick.
Yeah.
So uh he is right.
What was the guy was he how was he?
It's a white guy it's it's a white guy white guy in a transit van and uh you know I didn't report it you know now I'm reporting now.
That's what that part is saying too look and and this is kind of national but it's still touching on what we're talking about. I don't know if we are aware that Mexico actually sued the the country of Mexico actually sue American gun manufacturers. They sued them because they said that American gun manufacturers was selling directly to the cartels.
Yeah.
They said this now the Supreme Court threw it out Supreme Court threw the the lawsuit out so what is that saying? This country it it exactly exactly exactly.
Y'all know what's going on but the thing is too our youth are I mean the thing is though like they putting the guns on the street and then the youth are using it against each other. Like you know what I'm saying they they seeing like they got hate within themselves and then they hating their 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 brothers on these streets. Like and they doing the dirty work for them so I mean and that's very concerning to me.
What is it?
Because why do they hate each why do they hate one another like why don't where is the love in the black community? Why are they looking at each other and feeling like you know what I'm saying like they're they're not valuing their lives or the lives of the 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 people that are living in their neighborhood? What is going on with that that's deeply concerning.
I think it's kind of like what Kita was talking about like it's like I think all y'all kind of can agree with this way when it comes to like programs like CCY it's like. If they bring those back to life it would it would like help dissolve the problem a little bit about like teens and being angry with themselves they can't get the shoes that they see this. This boy got the Jordans on and they want them if they had CCY they could like at least alleviate the pain and and the stress.
Yeah it's it's a lack of hope you know what I'm saying?
We need to really declare um childhood trauma as a as an issue. Because and the people are not realizing that these young kids out here what they seen when they were young they seen shootings and killings and all these things and then we think that they're okay and just gonna go on with life. No you know this old saying hurt people hurt people and so we're not dealing with the root cause of that we're not dealing with what's really going on. Um what and what they've had to deal with and what they're growing up with we see certain things um you know particularly our majority of community think. Oh they're gonna they're okay and they expect them to get they they seen somebody get shot killed and then they gotta go to school the next day. Like it's okay and they're not understanding that that's not the case at all they just continue to deal with these things and and exactly. I mean my son you know he my my father passed away recently I didn't realize it was bothering him. You know I'm thinking he fine he does you know what I'm saying it he broke down not too long ago and I'm like oh now that may it hit home because I realized this is my son. It hasn't seen nothing traumatic what are these kids who seeing things are traumatic they come home they don't know if they're gonna really eat they don't know that's the that's the only way they'll get easier one at school. They don't the electric was gonna be on they don't have some of these kids don't even have a bed to sleep in and they're not and people are not realizing that there is a war. And we need to declare this war on childhood trauma and really deal with that and understand what's going on. I do know I want to go back to this Carrie Coman she had mentioned about the the recreation center and about it being open at seven o'clock for perfect for working families. Yes I understand why it's open for the day camps I'm talking about being open for people to come in. The day campers in in was one thing but I'm saying an open gym and all those things for our young people because guess what? At seven o'clock in the morning our young people can't come in they're not allowing them to come in so yes I understand the working families providing them the day camp. But I'm talking about making sure that it stays open later for the young people to come in so what I'm they open up at nine PM but not for our young people to come in.
She said they close at nine.
Right but but I'm saying but it's not for our young people to come in is what I'm saying so what I. Yeah and they exactly they closing at eight and some of them may still open to nine but it's not an open mindset for our youth to get off the streets and come in and hang out. There's no place for them and that's what I that's what they have to think about they have different programs they may have a community council that's open they're open for that community council to come in. They may have an organized sport for our young people but guess what not every kid plays sport yes my kid um he played football um. Football track and baseball but guess what he likes to do he likes to draw that's that's his so when when I want to get him to do something I will say hey you want to you want to draw today. You are not like you want to go to baseball I gotta say if you want to draw today you have to do these things and so what I'm saying is opening it up for young people who just want to hang out. They just want to hang out they don't want to do no sports they don't want to do it they just want to go somewhere to hang and hang with their friends and so make it open for them to be allowed to come in. So yes they open up to nine but that's usually nine for adults that's not nine PM for our young people to come and hang out so that's a different set of mindset is what I'm talking about. So but thank you um Cherry for tuning in and 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 addressing what I was saying but it was a little different than what I was talking about I was talking about for the young people and not just for interfering. Yes I I agree that that's perfect for our families you know our working families to be able to have take their kids somewhere but I'm talking about a little different than that.
I want to add something.
Okay uh thank you thank you so I want I do want to um address I want to address the youth trauma. Um that's something that I'm extremely concerned about um you know uh I'm gonna say that I went to a high school I'm not gonna name the high school but.
Why not?
Okay let's I mean.
Throw it out there girl who playing?
I might have been at Schroder and um you know I I did I was talking to the the principal there and um you know he said that. The majority of the students there ninety-eight percent of the kids are on a five oh four plan and five oh four for those that don't know are. Basically if you on a five oh four you've been exposed to some form of trauma and so when I asked him that I said. You know what is like what's your trauma recovery plan what's your trauma response to these kids that are on five oh fours? Um and he said nothing you know what I'm saying and that was extremely concerning to me because like she said I mean these kids may. See somebody get shot be holding their 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 friends and then and dying in their arms and then expected to go to school the next day. But then they have no trauma there's no trauma recovery nobody is intentionally helping these kids to deal with their trauma. And so that's one of the things that I would like to do when I'm elected is first is is create programming create spaces for these kids. To uh be able to deal with their trauma because you that really is like a skill almost like when you're going through grief. Um when you're going through trauma you have to learn how to deal with that intentionally you don't just move forward you know what I'm saying you have to be taught. How to deal with this so that when you're feeling elevated and activated that you know how to deal with it whether it's like you know touching your um. The pressure points on your hands or learning breathing techniques or you know just learning ways to be able to calm down. Um when you're feeling elevated because you're having PTSD from traumatic events that have occurred and so without doing that. You know we are really failing our children by not giving them the skills and the tools that they need to be able to survive. These really traumatic incidents that that are occurring and so I mean it's just it's just so sad to continue to see that it's a cycle. And when kids are experiencing trauma they're ten times likely to commit a crime you know what I'm saying? So how do we address that how do we work with them how do we give them hope how do we let them know that they can get through this how can they turn that grief and that trauma? Into purpose and passion so that's exactly that's like high on my list that's the first thing I'm gonna do. Is figure out how can we heal our children because they're not our future they're our right now.
Yeah true and I feel like I feel like if I'm not mistaken because I think I was trying to but you said so the principal didn't have he didn't have a plan set in motion for any.
He did not CPS.
He did not he did not.
And these kids are acting like they and it's not even called act I'm not gonna say acting out these kids are just they're having these episodes. Where they're just starting where they just start going off in the hallways and they get they're feeling activated and elevated. Because their body like you have to move that energy out somehow you have to treat that somehow you have to know how you know what I'm saying? They probably don't even know that they're having this like elevated response because it's directly connected to losing family members losing mother you know what I'm saying their friends? They don't even know that and so but we expect them to what learn how are they gonna learn?
Yeah.
How there's no way they're going to learn when they are experiencing PTSD and trauma. So no we have to absolutely address that 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 type of programming has to be in the rec centers. We need social workers in the rec centers we need therapists and and people that are really going to love on these kids and teach them you know the the necessary tools that they need and. You know give them hope and help them to to see that they are bigger than their trauma so that they don't feel like so they don't go out and commit crimes and continue the cycle.
Yeah. Miss Judy Brown on on my Facebook uh page she said uh how many how many of you actually work with our youth?
I have before I've been a substitute teacher.
How many of you work with youth?
I've I've worked with youth for you know ten twenty years I was a substitute Spanish teacher and I worked I and I always took the jobs in the toughest schools in the inner city schools. I have absolutely um you know had training and have worked with youth like I said my dad was uh the director of Cincinnati Recreation Commission for. Several years and my mom was also a principal for twenty thirty years so you know I I've worked with the youth. Uh even when I was a youth and when I got older um and 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 graduated I was a substitute teacher so. I have direct uh training and experience working with inner city youth.
What about you Judy? Actually oh you said me?
You too they asked.
Uh actually that's what got me off the couch uh I was a case manager uh for kids and I saw how bad they were doing and that's why I wanted to run.
So um I when I first came home from undergrad I worked for Cincinnati Public Schools I work with our young people but. Um I don't think it's necessary for those that are running for office who have the work directly to work for you what it is is so when you're running for office you may not have touched every uh um occupation. But what you have to be able to do is collaborate and reach out to the people who do these things and so you know people always say well have you done this or have you done that no I can't tell you I've done every single occupation. No one's done every occupation however but I do have the mindset to be able to outreach to bring those people who have done those things who have the expertise and have the ABCs behind their name. To pull them in to see how we can work with them so we don't necessarily have to be the ones who have directly worked with our young people but we have to have the mindset to figure out how do we go get. Those programs and those people who are running those programs that can actually not only just say they're working with the young people but actually produce the the positive outcomes. Um to work with the young people when we get I I like to turn this a little bit if that's if it's possible because I'm not just talking about issues I want to talk about the election. Um and what's important because I I want people to think about this um a lot of times I I hear well how did you get involved or how did you decide to run or who decides who's gonna run for office? Um and what qualifies them to run for office and I'm just gonna tell you the basic qualifications to run for office which means that anybody can run for office. You have to be eighteen years of age live in the city of Cincinnati or the or the municipality that you want to run in. And in some cases depending on where you live at have to get signatures by those people registered in that city for the city of Cincinnati to run for city council. We all had to get five hundred valid signatures in order to run not an easy feat I can tell you every last one of these people here can tell you that wasn't easy to get those five. It seems like it's easy in the city of two hundred and sixty thousand people however not everyone realizes that they're not registered to vote. Because they've been purged and that's but purged you've been purged by design because who doesn't regularly who doesn't what community don't vote regularly the black community don't vote regularly.
Can you tell them what five hundred ballot?
That's what I'm gonna tell so so that's what I'm I'm gonna get to that because I'm gonna let you know that because of we say because they think someone may think they're registered to vote. Only find out that they're not actually registered to vote because they have been purged because and generally who's been purged is the black community because we don't vote consist uh consistent.
What purge means so they know some people know what purge is okay.
Um so they have not been um they had they don't vote continuously so some if you haven't voted in a while you may have been purged and purged meaning getting kicked off.
Why?
Um because you have not voted so they don't think you're valid anymore they don't know if you've changed your um address they don't know if you've changed your name they don't know if you're deceased. So therefore since you had and they have to they can't keep everyone on forever so those are those things that you have to do so if you are registered to vote you have to continually vote. Um to make sure that your vote or so when we're looking for these five hundred valid signatures that means one. You have to be registered in the place that you said because a lot of times we have people who are signing they're signing a new address but they haven't registered to that address. They registered underneath their old address one two they have not changed their they they they're signing underneath their married name.
Praise your girl.
And they're not actually legally married based on your voter registration so you have to think about that. You're you're legally married but you have you're not based on your voter registration you're not because you haven't changed you haven't updated your voter registration.
Happens to me.
So yeah y'all looked at each other I just want to let you know that just want to let you know right so yeah so when you have no that's why I said it so when you go vote. Um if you have not updated your voter registration you need to make sure that you when you go sign that you're not signing by the your last name that you married you're.
For women.
Right for women you're signing your name that you are registered underneath and not necessarily your married name if you had not updated it okay? Two you need to make sure that wherever you are registered to vote and you have not updated if you moved you cannot sign that address. A lot of people sign that address where they live at now but guess what you're still registered underneath your vote old address so and technically that's illegal. Well they don't know that that's illegal so you have to update your voter registration based on the address and where you're at um and so making sure so they don't know so they sign. Um the other thing is people sign I have people sign from everywhere and you don't live in the city of Cincinnati because people say I live in Cincinnati. What I mean what they mean by living in a Cincin in Cincin in the city of Cincinnati do Cincinnati police? Come to your rescue or is it Springdale or is it um St. Bernard or somewhere else so you may say you live in Cincinnati. As a as a whole but you don't live in the city of Cincinnati so the city of Cincinnati and how I define it makes makes it easier is is the. So the city of Cincinnati, and how I define it makes, makes it easier, is, is, is defined by what police department comes to your rescue if you call nine one one at your house? So if you call nine one one, is it the city of Cincinnati police comes? Then yes, you live in the city of Cincinnati. If St. Bernard comes, if Elmwood comes, if Springdale comes, you don't live in the city of Cincinnati. And people don't realize that when they sign, they mean well, but they don't realize that. So it's very difficult. Um, and then they have these rules, um, that they didn't even know they changed, but they didn't even know what they were. So for me, when I first got the signatures, remember I was thirty-two short and remember I told you I had to start all over?
Yeah.
So I was thirty-two short, so I had to start all over as opposed to allowing me to finish.
So you were thirty-two short, they made you start from number one to five hundred?
Start all over.
And you did that thing. You got them, girl.
And so I ended up, so the very first time, I actually turned in eight hundred and something signatures. I turned in eight hundred and forty-two signatures. Um, and so I was, ended up being thirty-two short, cause some people were not re, they don't even realize they're not registered anymore or the things that I said. And so then I had to start all over. What, what happened was, they was actually about to go to court because they were saying that that was not supposed to happen. I was supposed to be able to do thirty-two more. I suppose you had to get thirty-two more, but then the Board of Elections told me that I had to unfail. So I unfail and then, exactly, I unfail, then they said, oh, well, no, you didn't really have to unfail after it was already too late. And they didn't, they didn't, they made me, they didn't give me my signatures back. So I had to start back over and get another eight hundred and something signatures, because in order to get five hundred, you already know, you gotta get double that. But you can't, here's the thing, you can't get over a thousand.
Oh, you can't get, you can't?
You can't get, yeah, exactly. You can't do more than a thousand. I can't turn, you can't turn in more than a thousand signatures, but you have to get five hundred. And no, I couldn't use the same ones. I had to go back, they took those and they wouldn't give them back and they wouldn't count them. So I had to go back out. So basically, for me, I had to get over, I had eighteen hundred and forty-two, eighteen sixty-two the second time. So I had to get well over, you know, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred signatures in order just to get my five hundred. You see what I'm saying? But, and it was fine. I, I said, you know, we were, we were upset. I'm like, you know what? I can't keep playing with the game, I ain't gonna get upset, just do it again. And I wanna make sure that people understand that. So you have to get those five hundred signatures, be eighteen, be a registered voter. You, they have to be registered too, cause that was the other game they played when I went to turn in. They talking about you, they said, you, um, I wanna tell you, Ms. Cole, you're not registered to vote. I said, hold on, don't play with that games with me. You talking to somebody who vote all the time. And not only that, I checked my voter registration. The only time I didn't vote was in a, a primary. But guess what? I voted in this primary, so that's not right. You need to go back and check it. Oh, you're right, Ms. Cole. I'm sorry, stop playing games with me.
They trying to play games.
Yeah, they trying to play games. They did this, they did it again with the, with my, uh, email. They created this email, so I was missing out on questionnaires and endorsements that I could have received because they had this email address, they had ColeForCouncil@gmail. I, where do you get that address from? That email address? That's not, that's on my paperwork. None of that, that address is nowhere found on any of my paperwork I submitted. So, but those are the games, we just, I wanna make sure that we're clear and convicted felons can vote in the city of Cincinnati, in Ohio. I don't just in the city, in, in Ohio. And if you're down at the Justice Center, guess what?
While you're inside?
While you're inside, as long as you have not been convicted, cause you know, you're sitting there waiting to be convicted. But if you're at the Justice Center, you can vote by absentee ballot. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I don't know if you're gonna get your ballot, cause you know how you, they don't, they play around with the mail, but you can actually still vote. Um, there are enough of things, but I just want us to be mindful and know about voting. And, and not only that, they always say this is an awful election because, you know, the president is not on, but for people need to understand that politics is actually a local thing, because that's what really affects you, is the local level. Um, and so for the first time, the national is kind of affecting us, but normally it's the local level that affects us. And so they need to make sure they're voting locally, but we are vote for city council because city council is so rah 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 and we out there, it's, um, twenty-six candidates. But the other important thing that they need to vote for is those judges. It's important, because either, as either, one of us go, if we're not up in front of our family members, somebody we know is gonna go in front of a judge. And you need to make sure that when you are, are, um, voting, you are making sure that you're voting for the right judge. You wanna make sure you're voting for someone that understands the issues, understands your community. Um, for too long, we keep just letting any judge go in there and then we wonder when we get up there, we're not getting a fair chance because they don't understand our plight. They don't understand where we come from. They don't understand our community. So we need to make sure that we don't forget that, the judges and our school board candidates. Um, but those judges are, are, are critical and important in those county positions. And not only that, us, stop voting for, stop make, stop.
Just because you're Democrat.
Just cause you endorse Democrat. We don't, all of us, none of us are endorsed Democrat. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I would run with these people, uh, any, any time of them, I'll put my money on them. Because they are, they have connected, they out there in the community and they know what's going on. And I, and I'm just saying that because it's important that we need to know that sometimes they say, well, it doesn't make a difference. It does make a difference. You get what you get if you don't even vote or if you keep voting for the same thing. You know, we have to make a change and we have to be conscious in when we're voting, that we're making sure that when we are talking and out there voting for people, that we're not voting because we just know their names. Yes, I do. I know I got a little catchy slogan, go to the poll, vote for Cole, but I'm gonna tell you, don't vote for me because you know my name. Vote for me for what I stand for and making sure that I'm gonna be, and you can hold me accountable.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And if I'm doing something wrong, I expect to hear from Stefan talking about, you're a liar. I expect to hear that. I don't have no problem with that. Because if I'm not doing nothing, if I'm seriously, cause you have to be, and if you are afraid of that, then you're not, you should not be running for office. Cause you have to understand, your personal things, you gotta set that personal stuff aside and, and do make sure you're doing the right thing. Making sure that you are running not for a party, but you are running for the community. And, and, cause let me say this, though some of those Democrats knew how they, they got endorsed because they know they can raise the money to get endorsed. And so therefore, they had to pay, they gotta pay the party. I don't want anybody in office that's paying there for their seat. I want somebody who has earned their seat and who's gonna make sure that they're doing the right for the community. And don't come to my community when you running for office.
Right.
I wanna make sure that you've been in your community. And I'm gonna tell our people here, make sure that you are connected to your own community council, cause the question I'm gonna ask you is when is the last time you've been to your community council? And if you are not, have not been to your own community council and have not been involved in your community council, I don't know how I'm going to expect you to be involved and care for my whole entire city of Cincinnati, if you don't care about the city and, and the neighborhoods you live in. So for me, make sure y'all get involved and stay involved.
She on fire, man. I appreciate that. And I do feel like there should be a qualification. I, I mean, I'm a, I'm the president of my community council and that should be, that should be a qualification because you should have to work, you know, and, and be, have been doing the work with your community. That is so important, like, you know, it's important what you do when nobody's looking. You know what I'm saying? It's important. My mom says, um, you know, it's people see what you do and what you don't do.
Right.
And that's important, you know what I'm saying? So you need to be working and involved in your community and working for the people. So, I mean, I, I absolutely agree.
Sometimes, I'm gonna say this also, I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna take a step back. Sometimes your community council may not, it, it's not always, depending on where you live at, it may not always be inviting to you. So sometimes you may have to, but the mere fact, have you gone? Have you even tried? You know what I'm saying? You may say, well, you know what? I, I tried and they just not doing what I feel like they doing, so I'm gonna do this. And that's, and that's to me, that's still being involved in your community. It may not be involved in your per se, um, I guess, or what is recognized as your community council, but you're involved in your community is what I'm saying. So, I understand that some, some communities are, are stagnant, some community councils are not always inviting to new ideas or new thoughts, so therefore you may feel like you're pushed out. But I say, don't give up, continue to be involved and continue to be involved in your community. Because if you can't be involved in your community, I can't understand how you gonna be involved in my city, my whole entire city of Cincinnati.
That's, I agree with that.
When, when, when y'all go to the poll, y'all, y'all voted already?
Nope.
So when y'all go to that poll, who y'all gonna vote for?
Everybody on in this, uh, council. Everybody's in here.
I want y'all to take a picture of it too.
And will, and will.
I want y'all to take a picture of it and send it to me. Send it to me, please.
I sure will.
Can, can, can we do that? Can we do that, y'all?
I sure will.
Yes, you can take pictures of that. I did that.
You weren't supposed to.
No, they ain't gonna know you for having that poll. I'm gonna vote for Cole.
But yeah, I'm just saying.
No, you can't.
For real.
Can I get pictures of Cole? Come on now, come on now.
I mean, we so quick to say like, uh, skinfolk ain't kinfolk, right? I wish we had something to say about like the Democrats. Like just because they're Democrat, doesn't necessarily mean that they're for you. You know what I'm saying?
No, I mean, they real Democrats. I just mean, they, so some of these, you gotta vote on they, look at what they policies is. Just because they got endorsed, doesn't mean that they're actually Democrats. Look at they, look at they voting right now.
Look what they doing. They selling us out, you know what I'm saying? They don't say for us.
Um, um, and I'm not throwing shots at Democrats, but I'm just, I am talking to our community. Um, you know, we've been voting Democrat for the last sixty years and, um, we have to start getting something for our vote. Um, you need representation and that's important. And that's really what she was speaking to about having representation in those places that are making decisions. And that's a part of the reason I'm running, because I know who I represent and I wanna be in those rooms making decisions when it comes to those people. So it's very important to have representation and Democrat doesn't actually mean that they represent you. And that's what we need to take into account.
Yeah, that's so true.
I would tell you, I went, I, because it happened to be at my church where they had their endorsement, the Democrats had their endorsement, I just wanted to see what the room looked like and who was actually making the decisions in there. And so you would be surprised, those who were making the decision, the majority of those making a decision did not look like you and I, um, which is, uh, funny. So that's what's, what's ironic that you need to realize that who's making those decisions? And if you want to actually be involved, you need to be a precinct executive. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that next, and making sure that, we're talking about a, a party and all this other stuff, making sure that you actually get involved a little more too.
So, so y'all talking about parties, I, 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 I done witnessed that, uh, at City Hall, I go to all, I go all the time. I'm a Democrat, but I say I'm a good Democrat.
Right.
To be for my people, when I be by, by that, not just our people, for the citizens, you know what I mean? You got Democrats that sits on the, uh, Deus up there and, uh, what they do is, uh, they vote on the same things. Like, I keep bringing it up, tax abatements. Tax abatements help pushing people out of the community. So if we all council members up here and we saying, yes, 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 your ass guilty. You voting on people pushing out the, out, out the neighborhood too, cause you putting your ass on it. And they just don't see that. They just still think it's cool. That's why I always address the issue when I go to City Hall, in they face, you can watch my page or see my page. I mean, calling out all the time. Uh, Mary F. Tab, you, you lie to the community. All you is a photo op machine. You wanna take pictures of yourself and other people and don't do nothing for the people. You, you, you go along with the future commission. Future commission is a bunch of executives like Proff and Gamble, uh, P and G.
How many of them live in the city?
And, say it again?
How many of them live in the city?
I don't even know, but they making decision.
Not a lot of them.
They making decision for the people.
They are.
And they, they actually the ones that's trying to privatize our water, our trash, our taxes.
Our Duke energy bills.
All this stuff. You know what I mean? Lobbyists, all this stuff plays a factor that's running the cities and nobody's not saying nothing about it. Like, it's falling on deaf ear. But I can go back to the, uh, Community Reinvestment Act, when banks got sued for discriminatory practice and redlining. See, nobody don't talk about this. That's why you see businesses just up in, Avondale Development Corporation. You got all these different corporations, nonprofit, they learn how to sue the banks. And once they learn how to sue the banks, they sign a CBA with the banks, a Community Benefits Agreement. But what you and I agree on, that's what we agree on. Don't go tell your buddy Mike and Tony, that's none of his business. I found about all this stuff out in two thousand and eighteen, I've been speaking on it to this day, falling on deaf ears. We even had people come on the radio, Lincoln West Show, speak about it. And I actually called them out. First of his name was Morris Williams. Was it Morris Williams? Yeah, Morris Williams. Morris Williams, he came on the radio, first he was with it. What's going on? Like, yeah, that money supposed to help black businesses fix up their homes, fix their businesses and do this, blah, 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 blah. He changed his whole.
When he got it going, he changed it around.
He changed it all the way around, like, well, you gotta go to the banks. You can go to the banks and ask them about the CRA Act. We went to the banks, they looked just like it was a joke, but it was a game. They've been doing, our own people. They hate when I talk about it. Our own people.
These are so-called Democrats.
Nah, nah, they called pastors. Hell nah. You pastor.
Democrat pastors.
Democrat pastors. They all, bro, this stuff deeper than deep.
That's crazy.
No, no, it's true story, you can Google, you can Google Community Investment Act lawsuit.
Right.
Fifth Third Bank, Huntington Bank, Key Bank, First Financial Bank, Credit Union, uh, 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 B, B and B and T, and another, they Sun Trust Bank. True, my fault, Truest Bank, they done merged together, but it's deep, it go deep, what, what's going on in our community, that's why we suffering. You telling me when, 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 in College Hill, they get free rent for six months, for six months free rent for their businesses?
Hold on, hold on, go ahead, finish. You, you, I'm saying you, I'm telling them, hold on, they said who, I said, hold on, tell the story.
Okay, okay.
Tell the story.
Stop correcting me if I'm wrong now.
You right on, you right on, that's what I'm telling you, hold on, listen to the punchline. They said, they said who, and I said, listen to your punchline.
Okay, my fault.
Go ahead, tell the punchline.
So, so, so they'll, I mean, back to the program, that was a commercial break, thank you. So, 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 you, you go in College Hill, they give for six months free rent, but you go to Avondale, they gotta start paying they rent. On the store, the storefronts.
Oh, the storefronts.
Now, you get what I'm talking about from Zola all the way down to each storefront in Avondale Town Center. Even the food, what's the food, uh, country meats, all them.
Or the new, black.
All this stuff in that facility, but it's a gang what they doing to the black people, and nobody ain't saying nothing, our own politicians know about it. All they do is go out and take pictures and be happy, and don't help the community, brother. All the stuff I really know, I've been holding back some of this ammunition, not saying nothing, but it's.
We had, uh, Ms. Marcia Futel on here, and she was talking about some things along the nature. Like how they, she said something about Indian, remember she said something about Indian Hills where they was, like, taking the money from.
Nah, that's different.
Money's supposed to be given to, like, the poor, but they give it to them. Once they get in there, they switch it up.
That's different. That's just way, that's way different. This, this, this is the banks, when banks got sued for discriminatory practice and redlining, that's totally different, Indian Hills, that's totally different. See, they might be, she might be on something else issue.
She talking about the school board stuff.
School board stuff, okay, but that's totally different, how they plan a black community to start your business off, man.
And don't nobody really wanna speak up on that, I see you.
Yeah, I mean, and, and look at this, like, so, I mean, remember the bra, I mean, everybody remembers that bra from the summer.
That was a drunk bar fight.
The first thing, right.
Drunk bar fight.
The first thing they wanted to do was shut down the businesses and make them close at 5:00 PM or whatever, like, they attacking the businesses, instead of actually planning, like, why, why would you be out of town, Avtab, on that weekend, the busiest weekend in the summer? Why would you go out of town? Like, that's poor planning, that's poor planning, that, and that's the thing, they just, they're not, I just feel like a lot of them have lost their way. Um, and they're not, they're reactive and not proactive. Proactive, you know every single year that these events are going to occur. Why would you go out of town? Why didn't you plan? Why didn't you have extra police officers? Like, but why you trying to put it back on the, on the businesses?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? And the black businesses at that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? That's completely unfair.
Nothing to do with that.
Exactly, and that's, that's absolutely what, um, Stefan is talking about, is like, they try to, try to find any type of way to shut down these black businesses and not feed into them in any type of financial way. I mean, they're, they're, they're just trying to shut them down, there, there's no support. Um, and, and that are, that's the things that, like, our community needs to be talking about, that's something that they need to be disturbed about, because, look, I mean, and, and, and when you can, when you continue to vote in these same people that are clearly.
Exactly, exactly.
Clearly not supporting us, they not for you right now, they're not. Um, then you're gonna keep getting the same old, same old.
Same result.
So that's why you don't, you do not take that ticket and say, vote Democrat, no, you know what I'm saying? Because look at the ways that they voted, look at what's going on in our community, and that is a direct reflection of the things that they have voted on and decided for us, and clearly, we aren't, you know, we're, we're suffering from that. So that's, and, I mean, that's why we're running, because we know we could do a way better job, we're going to. Um, you know, and I wanna talk about this, this, uh, legislation, this, uh, development, uh, Connected Communities Legislation, y'all, please read about it. Please read about it.
Tell us, tell us something about it.
Just because they say, you know, I, I not hear a whole, a lot of people saying, well, you know, they, the legislation is talking about affordable housing. Let me tell y'all something, affordable housing is a, is only a suggestion in the legislation. So it's not, there's not a mandate, so you can't be, so, so it's not saying that these developers that are coming in have to develop affordable housing.
They also need to understand what's affordable, because what's affordable to one person is not affordable to the next person.
Stop saying affordable, put a number on it, that's what I wanna hear.
They say low income.
What, okay, put a number on that too, you know what I'm saying? Like, what, what's affordable to somebody, what's affordable to you may not be affordable to me. So they, they just throwing out, like, these arbitrary words, and people feel like, okay, well, yeah, they, we gonna get affordable housing. But if it's only a suggestion, if I'm an out of town developer, and you only recommend that I do affordable housing, I'm not gonna do it, I'm gonna go for the luxury every single time, so do not fall for the banana on the tailpipe, because it's not true, it's just not true. And just because they're telling you something, that also means that that's not, it doesn't mean that that's necessarily true. So read, you gotta read up on these things that they've been voting for, because this particular legislation is gonna continue the gentrification that you guys have been seeing and experiencing in our neighborhoods, it is not for us, that legislation has to get up out of here.
And that's a problem that I have as well, because, for example, they, now they all of a sudden putting all these investments in, into the community, but what about those long-term, uh, residents who've lived there? You know, what about, I mean, I'm gonna use Madisonville as an example, those people have lived in Madisonville forever, now since you want to gingerify their neighborhood, now you wanna put some money into it because you done moved all the blacks out of the community. And you keep saying gentrification, I'm just gonna be real frank, you already moved all the blacks out of it, and now you wanna put money invested in it. But you should've been investing when the black people were there, and they needed that, and that's what needed to happen, and that's not what's going on. This, this connected communities is not a good thing for us, it, what it does is also, is it paints a broad brush on zoning, which means your, every neighborhood is different for a reason. And so what you're doing is saying every neighborhood can, should be acceptable to the same zoning, uh, classifications, and that's not the case at all. Um, Bon Hill is different from the hillsides that are dead in, um, Mount Lookout. And so how am I gonna have the same zoning? You need to go back to an enhanced form-based codes.
Yes.
Form-based codes is making sure that that zoning is conforms to the neighborhood, the beautiful things that happens in those neighborhoods. Making sure that it, uh, when you're gonna be developing things, it's gonna conform into the community. You're not just gonna have, in a sense, you're gonna have a houses that are one-story, and then all of a sudden you're building 500-story houses. That doesn't, it doesn't conform to the neighborhood, and so it's gonna still, so form-based codes is making sure that it conforms to what's going on in that neighborhood. Making sure that the neighborhood still keeps the characteristics and the history that has built that neighborhood. And that's why you need to have that, not just this, not just this, this, uh, zoning, and they're gonna say, oh, it's gonna create density. No, what it's also gonna do is create, uh, parking problems as well.
Yeah.
Because you've cut down the, the numbers of, you're gonna cut down to, uh, exactly, and you cut down the, the number of, it's a mandate in there, but the number for the parking spaces is lower, so where these people gonna go? Where these people gonna park their vehicles at? And so it's creating a whole issue, and they haven't even come out and really spoke to the community. They say, oh, we had these, we had these.
Community engagement.
Community engagement, but who was at these community engagements? Not a lot of people were there.
Not a lot of people. And they had us writing all post-its, they had us writing all post-its, they didn't really wanna hear us, they had us writing it down. Where's the post-its at? Where are they right now? Did you even put our recommendations in the legislation? So, I mean, that's just, I mean, I need, I need our community to, to read, I want y'all to understand what's really going on. Just because they say it is, doesn't mean that it is, and that's exactly why you do need to look at the new people that are running and understand that, you know, like, we're, we're from Cincinnati, we love Cincinnati, um, I don't even consider myself a politician. I commu, I consider myself a humanitarian, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm here for the people. I don't have any large goals to go off and to the White House or nothing, like, this is it, this is my city, and I just needed, you know, that we deserve better. Um, you know, and so you, and you deserve, I mean, we all deserve better, and what's happening right now is despicable. And they're not, uh, working for us anymore, they're not working for you, and, um, you know, and that's why it's time to go. Uh, I do want, I would love for us to talk about the Duke Energy Bill, because that's just another example, like, they selling us out to developers, they're stealing from us.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So let y'all know about, it's called the Aggregation Program, uh, they, they actually letting other suppliers jump on your Duke bill. I don't know if it's way out here yet, this is township, if I'm not mistaken.
Springdale.
Springdale, so, uh, and Mike made it out here, Aggregation Program, and, uh, what Don was talking about, I always speak, speak about it. Mika Owens started this, she's the chair of this committee, Aggregation Program. On your Duke bill, you gonna have other suppliers like IGS, International Gas Service, and then you gonna have, uh, Dynergy. And, uh, I had, I actually, I had, uh, on my gas bill, Duke bill was Duke, uh, Dynergy and Constellation.
So they merging us, what's going on?
They've been doing that, they did, they started this like maybe 2011, 2011 when Roxanne Quill, was Roxanne Quill, but she was a mayor at the time. Uh, say it again?
Yeah, they got one of them called Synergy.
Yeah.
Synergy. Right, right.
It's an opt-out contract.
Well, uh, well, like I say, what she was talking about is the Aggregation Program, again, uh, they got a new one coming, Sopac.
Mm-hmm.
Sopac, S-O-P-E-C.
And this is, this is without your knowledge, they're gonna implement it without your knowledge?
Nah, 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 let me get it again, I was down there, uh, last week, and, uh, the owners came down there, you wouldn't even know they was the owners, how they look. They was older.
Hmm.
And they was sitting in the back, they had lobbyists down there, lobbyists came and approached me, she said, I said, this y'all, she said, nah, this ain't us, Stefan. She, 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 she told me, she, no, because they lobby for that.
Right.
See lobbyists, you can be a lobbyist, I was a lobbyist at one time, for, for, for black people, let y'all know, y'all gotta know that. It costs $25 to be a lobbyist for the city, and I was a lobbyist for the people. And that's why I was all, that's why I always speak up what's going on and say something about what's going on, like the Aggregation Program. So this new one's called Sopac, a nonprofit organization, when that came out, things got put on hold, they put it on hold to, they gonna pass it after election, that's what's gonna happen, you won't, you ain't gonna know what is gonna happen.
It's like this High Park thing, y'all don't know why, why they let, let that go, they think that High Park issue is dead, guess what? It's only paused, because they already know, that guess what, after the election, there's nothing you can do about it, that's why we need to be called.
What's the High Park, what, what's, what's that issue? Speak on that issue.
Uh, Connect Community, that's what you talking about, Connected Community.
Connected Community, yeah. It's part of the Connected Communities, what it was is the developer, it's, they say it's not, but it, they say it's not Connected Communities, but what it is, is, is that, and it, High Park is not, it was not the first time it happened, but what happened is, is that in High Park, they had a, they wanted a planned development, which means they're, they're, they're right now, it only allows for you to build up to 50 stories.
Connect Community.
Um, and so what the planned development wanted to do was to build to 85-foot stories, and they tried to come in, the developer said that it was for, to increase housing. However, part of that plan was not only to build 85, uh, stories, but also to allow hotels. So last time I checked, hotels is not housing.
Right.
And so the community asked for it to be, um, for it to hold off for 30 days, so we can sit down with the developer and have a conversation. The developer said they was not willing to sit down with them until after the vote passed. Well, council, um, voted to move forward. Now, there was, uh, Scotty Johnson and, um, Jamashell and, was that done with two?
Victoria.
Oh, and Victoria, no.
There's only two.
It was only two at first, it was only two that voted, it was only two that voted, no, against it. Um, and so High Park decided that they were going to do a referendum, and they went out and got signatures, and they were gonna put it on the ballot. I'm gonna tell you, it was the first time in my history that I know of, of a community doing a referendum to reverse a decision that affects their neighborhoods, um, against council, because what they said was, they were gonna vote them all out.
Yeah.
So this council got scared, because let me mind you, they did the same thing in, in Bon Hill with the villages of Daybreak. And this council doubled down at first and said, we don't care what you say, we're gonna do it, until now they got this referendum, and so they, High Park, they, they, they got them together. They got all these signatures, they was going on a ballot, and so then the council came back, because it's an election year, because them High Park people was gonna vote them out, because they're not like we are, you know, when I say we, meaning the black community, we are so, we are, what I mean is, we, we gonna vote Democrat regardless. We gonna vote because it's, just because it's a Democrat, and it ain't against the Republicans. Well, man, guess what? Just because I'm saying don't vote for the Democrats in office, doesn't mean I'm a Republican, because I'm not. Nor am I advocating voting for Republicans.
No.
What I'm advocating for is voting for independents, voting for people who are going to do the right thing. I know someone asked me, if you're not a Democrat, then what are you? I'm an independent Democrat, and so, and I know, and some people say, um, uh, I paid attention, that's why. So, um, some people ask, uh, then some people, someone responded, uh, independent Democrats in charters, well, charter is independence, that's what that is. Charter is based on, uh, the Good Government Committee, it's founded in 1829, or 29 or 39, um, what's it, 1929 or 1939, I didn't mean to say 18, 19. 1929 underneath the Boss Cox days, when they wanted to have good government, and so that's how it came about. So it was people, independents from each of the parties, that came together to make sure that the city is moving forward in the right direction, in terms of good government. So that's how you got, for the first time, uh, Ted Berry, well, he was a charter, who was the first black, uh, mayor, and that's how you got, uh, no, I'm talking about Marion Spencer, the first black woman on council, it's underneath the charters, and so we need to be mindful of that. We get the first blacks that got elected was underneath.
Jamashell's not the first black.
Oh, okay, my fault.
So, I'm talking about how we got the first blacks, they were charter rights. Ted Berry was the first black mayor we had, he was a charter right, the first black female on council was a charter right, was Marion Spencer. So it was not underneath the Democratic Party, it was underneath these charters, who were independents. So again, we need to stop being beholden to a party and make sure that we are voting for people who are going to do the right thing.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know what political, I'm, I'm an independent, I am a leaning Democrat. I say that, I say a leaning Democrat, because I'm not gonna vote for you.
Independent as well.
And he's an independent, what, independent?
Uh, GD.
He's a, he's a good Democrat. That's what that is, a good Democrat, and so what I'm saying is that, I'm a leaning Democrat, because, and I say a leaning Democrat, I guess that would be what you would say, a good Democrat, which means that I'm not going to necessarily vote on you because you have a D behind your name.
Right.
I'm gonna vote on you because what you're gonna do for my community and what, and what, and what you stand for. Also means that, like we always say, uh, just because you look like me, doesn't mean you for me. And so that's what you need to be worried, that's what we need to be worried about, not worried about, because also when you go up there and vote for council, the council, we ain't got D's, R's, I's behind our name, all we got is the person's name.
Yeah.
So vote for me, vote for the G.
I said, well, yeah, Raphael, but go ahead, say what you say.
Oh, wow.
You're supposed to be here.
I wanna, I wanna bring to attention, like, basically what I'm hearing, you need representation. And that, that's really to sum up what, what we're, what we're saying up here, and the issues that we're bringing forward, because we bringing these issues forward, because this is what's affecting our community.
Yeah.
Like, so, and, and we're, and because we have experienced life as you have experienced life.
Exactly.
We are going through these same things, so it's important to get representation in the rooms that make these decisions for you. We can't just keep sitting by and, um, expecting things to get better without any effort.
Right.
Um, and so we have to start adding to this conversation, we have to start participating, and I think I said this the last time I was on you guys' show. I think I said this before, that, um, I understand, because I was out during the campaign, and I keep hearing our community say they don't feel represented, no matter how, no matter how much they vote, they don't feel like they ever, uh, voting never changes anything in our community. So, so with that being said, that's why you have to stop voting just one party and get something for your vote. And it's very important, because every issue, every issue up here that was just spoke about, it's all about people representing you in the right way, when they get in the rooms to make decisions.
Can I say something, can I just, uh, pop in, because I know people, uh, you're not getting anything, and I can't say that for every, every person that's in office has done that, um, they don't get anything or don't do anything, um, because, um, speaking as a person that's on this panel here, who has been on council, I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm being clear on my voting record, um, of what I have done for my community and will continue to do for my community. Um, at a time when we were talking about, um, felons not actually getting a second chance. Uh, when I was on council, what we were doing was asking different companies to give Ohio convicted felons, and I found out, we're asking these companies, we're asking coworkers, we're asking all these places to provide a second chance, but the city of Cincinnati wasn't doing the same thing. So you know what, uh, city, I'm, we're not gonna ask companies to do something that we're not willing to do. So I made it possible that the city of Cincinnati start providing a second chance to those who have a record. And so I, I'm, I'm proud of my record, I, I, I keep making sure that I do my, my, have my, and that's still standing around. The Neighborhood Business District Support Fund, that many of our community councils are partaking in. I created that Business District Support Fund, because I wanted to make sure, at the time, what was going on was our community councils and our business districts were competing for the same money, and they were fighting. And I wanted to make sure the community council got their money, and our business districts got their money, and so therefore they were working together to make, improve the community, and making sure that we're uplifting where we all, where they live at, and they were not fighting. So that's two things I've done. The other thing I've done is, I did when I was on council, was I created the neighborhood in the neighborhood, which means that my neighborhood committee, because we all know the committees right now meet in the middle of the day, many of us are working in the middle of the day, we gotta take off work to come and be involved in our government. How you talking about representing someone if you don't even hear from them? So I created this program where our committees, some of our committees, at least my committee, was in the evening, at a time and location that was convenient to our community. I also instituted quarterly evening council meetings, because again, our council meetings are at 3:00 in the middle of the day. So I wanted to make sure that our council meetings were in the evening, so citizens can participate. Now, since I've gone, they reversed all those things, but those are things that I did do, so there's not, there's people, because people say, oh, people don't do anything when they get in there, not true.
Well, I, I wanna add that too, I wasn't saying individuals or politicians, yeah, yeah, you wasn't doing it, but.
I was talking about the citizens say that, and I think it's important that the citizens need to understand, there are people that do do things, however, what needs to happen is that you, the citizen, need to hold us accountable, it shouldn't be just a Stefan Pryor hold people accountable. It should be everyone coming out, holding everyone accountable, and so.
Why it's so important, because you, you, it takes five votes on council to, to get things passed. So we can't expect one individual to be our, let's say, savior. We have to go in both the right way with the people with the same agenda, and to get those things done.
Exactly.
So yes, one individual, some individuals do go and fight for you, but that's the thing, they're individuals, and I'm gonna be honest, our community kinda leave those people hanging. Uh, when, when, when things get dirty, when things get, when they're actually stepping up for you, we kinda leave them hanging. So it takes, uh, it takes a village, and, and that's the perspective we need to start having, because it takes five council members to get things passed.
And we need to make sure that, just like you want them, the elected officials standing behind you, what I hate is sometimes, I'm standing up and I'm fighting, I'm doing everything, and I look back when I'm, when I'm getting heat from the other community, and I look back and we ain't there.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Guess what? We need your support too, we need you to come to our rescue, because it's one thing, we getting beat up on WLW, which is down and down, and then we get beat up on 1230, our own people beating us up, that don't make no sense, I can't get, I'm tired, I can't ping pong between, look, I'm out here fighting for you, but not only are, am I fighting, but you're not even supporting us.
Exactly.
It's like, it's like Double Dutch, hold on, let me jump in this bit, like Double Dutch, hold on. First of all, some of these council members that's in these seats, they be lying to them, I keep saying, lying to us just for a vote. They don't do nothing for us.
Mm-hmm.
And y'all, man, like, who we talking about? Talking about Mika Owens. I, I, I'm talking about Messy Mika, Messy Mika, she, she, she wrong for what she been doing, she something else, uh, she's, she's, she's playing the black community, she had, uh, 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 she had opportunity to, to, to put someone in that seat, but she put Evan Noel in to see her campaign, uh, 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 she was a, she was her campaign fundraiser at one time, raising money for her.
And he's Avtab's best friend.
And Avtab's, uh, uh, whatever he is, but he's wrong, they wrong, but what they doing is playing a community just for a vote. They lying to the community, the same old stuff keep happening in, in, in them seats down at City Hall. We keep falling for the banana on the tailpipe, our own mayor, he full of crap, I hate to say that, I like him as a person, but he full of crap, he be lying. They all lies, man, they all lied to us in our face, bro, just to get a vote, and it's sad, it's sicking. See, that's why you see all the people running for council, 26.
That's when you know, well, you know, you would know the council's doing a good job, based on how many people running, because you got 26 people running, that.
That's why they're doing a good job.
And then, and then some of these candidates just running, never in the community, never came to City Hall to address the issue. Never came to City Hall to address the issue about anything.
No.
And they always wanna run, but did you know back in the days, and I can go way back in 1929, they had, they had, they had districts. And they had like 26 people running there, I mean, actually was in office, yeah, they had 26 people in office at one time.
Wow.
I got the book at home, and, and anything I tell you, I do my research, and I always keep it to myself, but I like to get it out there too, but at one time they had 26 people running, and then they voted down to nine, that's how you see nine on the seats.
Right, right, right.
So it's just sad, when I, when I went back to history and I saw that, I'm like, ain't that ironic that we got 26 people running? Back in the days, it was 26 people in the seats.
Right.
Mix votes, mixing the votes up, and, and, do I think some of them got paid to run, like, go ahead and run? Some of them got approached to go ahead and jump in the race, so you can mix up the votes, mix up the votes. I mean, then when you hear them talk and speak, you be like, damn, you for real? Where they find you, your ass from?
Right.
They don't know nothing, but basically, I, I, I drive a forklift truck. Uh, I'm sleepy, I'm sleepy, I'm tired.
And I, I wanted to address this too, like, so, and I wanna say something, because, because one time we were at a forum, and I, and I'm gonna speak on this, because this is classic, um, political, like, this is the, the classic tale of them, uh, trying to, you know, charm us and make us feel like they for us, but they're really not, I'm just gonna call it out. So we were at a forum one day, um, a couple of weeks ago, and I was sitting next to Mark Jeffries, and he was, like, during this forum, during the question and answer, uh, segment, um, Mark Jeffries is over there like this.
Councilmember Mark Jeffries?
Councilmember Mark Jeffries.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, okay, all right.
Talking about, when is this about to be over? Because who day? Who day, man, I'm trying to go watch the game. Like, man, get, when is this about to be over? I mean, they're just asking to me questions, and saying, who day, and trying to, and, and he felt like.
Loudly?
Um, he, he wasn't saying it loudly, he wasn't, but he was saying it next to me.
Right.
And I was disgusted.
Right.
Because I'm like, these public forums, like, these people are here to ask you questions and to qualify you, to re-elect you, and you don't even really care what's going on, you just trying to get back to, you, you're talking about you wanna go watch the game. You're not even deeply engaged, like, that's so arrogant, like, you so arrogant, you think you about to get this reelection, that you don't even really care, you just like, I'm trying to get home.
Let you know.
You not even deeply engaged anymore, that's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm saying these people have lost their way. That's why I'm saying these people have lost their way. And they're being, and, and they're being arrogant about it. They're, they're being, you know what I'm saying? They just think he, he don't even care that these people are out here to, to ask them questions and to qualify him. He's just like, oh yeah, I'm about to get it. You know what I'm saying? Who day? Yeah. That, that was disgusting to me. I feel like, um, people like him and leaders like him, they, they, they can no longer lead. Especially cause there's, he's taking our vote for granted. You know what I'm saying? He just knows that you guys are gonna vote for him. And therefore, he's like, so let's just get this out of the way. And so I could go back and watch the game. But guess what? Like, when it comes down to it, that's exactly what he's gonna continue to do. Like, that, that showed me right there. That he is not for us. He doesn't care what's going on. Like, he's gonna continue to vote for the colleague. He's gonna continue to lie in his pockets, vote for, with his colleagues and continue to destroy our city. And, and affect the people that are, um, you know, like we've been talking about, the, the issues that we've been talking about today. And I was just, that's disgusting to me that he would feel like bold enough to say this out loud and be hee hee ha ha with Anna Albee instead of being, um, deeply engaged in what's going on at the forum.
Let me just say, say this real quick. I, I just wanna say that what I did, you know, going forward about this, um, the Democratic slate, what I don't like that they have been put out is the fact that if you're not endorsed by them, that you're mega. Don't be fooled by the mega. And I have, I, I, it's funny, I, I say, yeah, don't be fooled by the mega, y'all. Because who lets, I mean, for any of us, the old school, let me say old school, they know what a daughters of American Revolution is about.
Racism.
At Daughters of American Res- Revel- Revelations, um, Resolution, Ameri, what's it, Daughters of American Resolution?
Yeah.
Look it up, figure out what it's about. And you'll find out that there's a member that's very proud to be one of those members.
I heard, I heard about that.
Yeah.
Hey, he gonna, he gonna keep it real. He gonna keep it real.
Trying to be political correct.
And Albee.
But that's, so for those who know, Mary Anderson, back in the day, she tried, she wanted to go, that's when the whole thing about Mary Anderson, how she got, um, famous, when she was going to go sing. She supposedly had got invited to go sing at the Carnegie Hall. Daughters of American Res- uh, Res- Resolution or Revelation, um, Decision. Um, they did not want her to be there. And so they, um, being, um, racist did not allow that. And so she, she was not allowed to sing there. So Eleanor Roosevelt actually pulled her membership. And in order to be a member of that organization.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Took out the president?
Yes.
He was racist too?
I know, but the wife.
Damn, tell me more.
And, no, she's not on support, she's a member.
She's a member.
The funny part is, and again, they wanna, she got up and called us mega. Um, I'm, I'm like, did you just, it's called a mega?
I'm going to tell this to the city council.
You the daughter of American Revolution, you proud to say it?
I'm going to see the council with this.
Here's the thing that I, that I also find.
Recognize, she's a Democrat.
So, right, yeah, right, yeah, she's a Democrat. Right. And I'm like, seriously? So it was, it was.
You think she racist too?
I don't know what she is, but I know she's, she, she.
She's in the group.
She's part of that organization.
Yeah, she racist as hell.
In order to be an organization, in order to be a part of the organization, you have to prove your lineage.
Okay.
Um, that of the, of the revolution war, that you had a bloodline in a revolution war. I'm sorry, that's how long ago, many of our ancestors can't prove anything because they didn't even have a birth certificate. So how you gonna, you know, and I'm not saying that goes for everything, but for the most part, many of us cannot, their families can't approve that, that you, that your family was part of that, so. But anyhow, I know we've been here for a long time, almost two minutes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, two hours, almost two hours. And so I, I'm, I'm gonna sum it up because I know I have to get home and make sure my child does his homework.
Keep talking about this racist stuff, huh?
And I'm gonna ask you to, um, that you really consider who you're voting for, making sure that you seem out in the community and making sure they stand for something. Because what they always say, if you don't stand for, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. So I'm telling you right now, don't fall for the banana in the tailpipe, using some of those words. Then making sure that you know who's out there and all Kenfolk don't, eh, all Kenfolk ain't, what they say?
It's Kenfolk, it's Kenfolk.
And Kenfolk, I always say, all people who look like me ain't for me. That's what I usually say. But I wanna say this, that, um, I have a record, um, I wanna continue to stand it up, uh, for you all. I'm gonna continue fighting for you all like I've done in the past. And I will ask you for your vote. Um, and I'm willing to always be here. I wanna thank you all for allowing us to be here and tell us our platform, tell us our sto- our story. Um, thank you to the dream team. I love you all. You all know that. You are my inspiration. I appreciate that. Um, they do a lot. Make sure, uh, they're supporting us, that you support them. I know this is not, you didn't ask me to, but this is, this is, I'm gonna give y'all this commercial. This right here, this gorilla strength, I'm gonna tell y'all, look. This, this, this is, this, this is what it is. You trying to lose some weight. You wanna make sure you get your gut into, in, in, in check.
Point it out in the camera.
Right, you wanna get your, your, your gut in check. You, you wanna lose some weight, wanna make sure that you right. This right here, this is, this is what it's all about. They have this in a powder form. They also have it in already pre-mixed. They have seasonings. So I always say, support those who support you. I definitely support you all. Thank you so much for always supporting me. Um, and when you go to the poll, vote for Cole.
But while I'm, while I'm running, Stefan Pryor, I tell her how it is, be straightforward, what's going on in our community. I'll tell them what's going, I mean, I'll, if I call you, let you know what's going on. But, uh, I want y'all to vote for me, pray for me, um, that I do get aboard the council because you need a guy like me. Call me, I'm, I'm the spirit of Eric Mays.
The Hulk.
If you don't know who Eric Mays is, loo- look him up in Detroit. He, he, he went off on other people, other candidates, for, for, you know, being BS, bullshit.
Mm-hmm.
So keep it a one hundred on y'all podcast, but I'll call it out. Uh, I won't be afraid. I'm not for sale. Uh, I, I, I won't deal with lobbyists to deal with our affairs, what was going on in our community, not at all. So my job is, goal is, is just like this, uh, gorilla strength, we gonna get all the way, all that poop from.
Cleans it out.
That bad poop from them.
Detoxify.
We gonna, we gonna, clean, no, this, 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 this like a, a modern day of castor oil. We gonna clean their gut system all out of all this bullshit, okay? Vote for Stefan Pryor, the name to know the name you can trust. And I always tell folks, I love you, and you can't, you can do about it.
Then Donald, you gotta hold this.
I love it.
Um, but no, I like that she said that because this is exactly what it's about. It's about us representing each other. And them bringing us to their platform, thank you, because they're trying to spread an awareness about us, you know? And, and, and how we need to come together as a community. And, uh, those are the things I really believe in. Um, it's not about, uh, whether I'm against another community because I'm not. But like I, I said in another, uh, video I was on, I will be absolutely insane to get up here and try to represent uh, uh, anything besides my community when I know how much they're suffering. Um, you know, uh, as a black community, we are the worst in the best categories and we are the, the best in the worst categories. Uh-huh. And, 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 and that's a problem. That's because we don't have people, uh, there representing us. Uh, and that's also our own problem because we, uh, have tapped out of the system. And I'm asking you to tap back into the system because you have true representation running, uh, to make something, uh, happen for you. And I am one of those people. That's why my slogan is, a vote for me is a vote for we, and I really believe in that.
Hmm, that's great. Thank you very much. Um, you know, I'm, I'm about, uh, you know, it's the dawn of a new day and it's time for a new way. Um, yes, we need to detoxify council, um, and, and get them up out of there because they have lost their way. They're not for us. They continue to vote on these legislations that are hurting our community, hurting our families, and they gotta go. And that's why we're out here. We wanna be your voice. We wanna fight for you. I've already been doing the work. I'm the president of my community council. I've, uh, done a lot for my neighborhood. I wanna do a lot for my city. Um, you know, I love y'all. I'm from Cincinnati. I'm, I'm Cincinnati Cincinnati, okay? And, and I'm here for you. I want to give you a voice. I'm your sister. I'm your mother. I'm your everything, your wife, your family, right? And so like Donald said, you need that representation. I'm about safer streets, youth empowerment, community wellness, community development. That's what I'm about. And really like, my whole campaign is about you, Y-O-U, united, uh, for, for Cincinnati. So again, um, it's the dawn of a new day. It's time for a new way. It's time for fresh ideas. It's time just for, for a new. We're, we're done suffering and we deserve better. So I love y'all.
Is, is that your slogan, the dawn of a new day?
It is.
Okay, then, y'all got some slogans, man.
We're product of the city, brother. We're product of the city, brother. That's what we here.
I just wanna say thank y'all for.
Thank you, thank you.
Y'all numbers going up now. Yeah, buddy.
And we, that's what we gotta do though, uh, our platform is just for positivity. Everything we, you know, our podcast is something about positivity. We don't do negative. We, we like to shit a light on people and just, you know.
Shit like the shit on people.
She said, she asked me to shit the light, but it'd be shot.
I thought you said we like to shit on people.
I said, I said, no, shit the light. I'm like, I didn't sound like that, but that's not what you saying.
Okay, alright, okay, um.
Sounds like that gorilla strength on them in the council.
November fourth, go out and vote. We got some good candidates here.
Oh, wait, wait, it is early voting right now too. Early voting right now, you can go right now. You go to the Hamilton, uh, County Board of Elections over in Norwood. So yes.
And when you go to the polls, don't be cold. Don't be cold.
Vote for all of us on here. Vote for everybody on here.
Absolutely.
So, so one more time, you said the, the, the early voting, where is that?
Uh, Hamilton County Board of Elections is over in Norwood. And, uh, you can go there. Uh, it was, it started, uh, the fourth, I believe, or, yeah, it started on the, it started on the floor. So you can go and early vote.
Yeah, we'll be down there.
Yep.
Alright, alright.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much for coming on, man. Thank you for tuning in to the product. I hope you got your quest, I hope y'all got your questions. If you didn't, rewind this or whatever, go back and look at it again and get all your questions.
And tag whoever you wanna ask the questions.
We all on Facebook too. We all on Facebook. So you can find me on Facebook at Donald Washington.
Dawn for Cincy.
Lakeeta Cole for council.
Champion Pryor, the one and only. I love you. You can't do nothing about it.
We out. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Peace, peace, peace.